Okay, we'll start the committee of the whole meeting for this afternoon or this evening. So if you would like to participate in public comment, please fill out a yellow slip in the back of the room and bring it forward to the city clerk and pass it on to me so that I have an idea that you'd like to speak. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Are there any additions to the agenda as posted? Okay, seeing none. Will there be a staff report at this time? Mayor Pressing.
I just wanted to say after the discussion last week on the signs for Carl, I did call Lynn Barnes, who was a former council member, and suggested that they might want to hold off until we completed the safety study on University Avenue. And she was very agreeable to that. So I explained to her that we weren't trying to undermine them in any way, although we have differences in other areas, but I think that they were interested in doing that. So that was good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment on that?
Yeah, Carol Ammons?
I wanted to just, Mr. Smythe pointed out last week the location of the proposed sign. And I've just realized this evening that there, the sign that is already located on the southeast corner of McCullough is almost invisible until you're on the sign. And so I think it's really difficult for us to move forward with approving the location of the sign without really looking at the wayfinding and the needs, because unless you get up to the intersection, you will not see that sign. And there is one currently there, but I don't think it serves the purpose for which they're seeking. So I hope that they would certainly consider holding off on that and really looking at where the positioning of the signs need to be on University coming from the east side.
Okay, thank you, Carol, for your comments. Brandon, Brandon Boies for Economic Development.
Good evening. I'm going to go over a few updates from the November Economic Development Activities Report. Staff is continuing to work with CBRE, our consultant, who is developing a request for proposals for the 200-vine site. We hope to have that RFP issued in early January. We've had two prominent closures in downtown in the last month: Black Rock Pizza in Lincoln Square and Strawberry Fields, which is also planning to soon close its doors. We have heard some interest in those sites, and we don't know who the prospective buyers of Strawberry Fields are that are mentioned in the paper, but we'll certainly inform council when we know more. A ribbon cutting was held to celebrate the completion of major work at the Boneyard Creek. That was on November 21st. There'll still be landscaping that's going in, actually has gone in since that event, and the park's going to look very nice. The Public Arts, Public Works, the Public Art Commission and others are going to be working together to do another event commemorating the Boneyard in the spring as part of the Boneyard Arts Festival. And so we hope to have music at that event, some nicer weather ideally, activities, and try to make it more of an event where the public can come out and experience this new feature. And hopefully the landscape, it'll be growing a little more by then, too. There is a lot of construction happening along University Avenue right now. You've probably seen the steel being erected at the Campus Circle site. And also Ivan Richardson has made a lot of progress on the new building shell, which is the western half of the strip at Gateway Shops. So that is moving along quite quickly. There have been three openings out, well, two out at the Pines at Stoughton Creek Commons. Omni Bar is a new studio fitness business. And the AT&amp;T store at the Pines is the other that is, I believe it's open. It may be nearing opening. And then at Sunny Crest Mall, Design Decisions, a new hair studio, opened up as well. There was also, just recently in the paper, reported that Ruler Foods is going to be closing at Philo Road. This came as something of a surprise. They've only been in that site about a year. They opened three locations in Champaign-Urbana and, as reported in the paper, chose to close that location due to lack of sales volume. So this is unfortunate occurrence in that business district. It was good to see a business coming in, but we've already been in touch with the property manager for that site, who have some ideas on how to attract different tenants to Southgate. The market at the square ended its season strongly. There were over 123,000 visitors to the market that were estimated in the past season, and over 4,500 patrons averaging each day of the market. Three sculptures were installed, finishing out the, this years, it's every two years we go through an installation process. Twisted Twos out on Philo Road near Haraches, Morelone, and it's actually a small city pocket park. And the presence of that sculpture, hoping we'll get a few more people using that space. Stranger Reduction Zone at the library, which is a fun, interactive piece. And Athirst by Sarah Depi. Sarah was present at the Boneyard Creek ribbon cutting, and they actually only finished installing that sculpture, you know, a few minutes beforehand. And that piece is a very nice addition to the park. I encourage you to go see it and see if you agree. It's made from recycled materials, which is sort of interesting because it is a, there's been other artworks in Urbana that have focused on the Boneyard and have focused on that environmental aspect and used materials recovered from the Boneyard. You may recall the Allman site had a large installation there at one point. So it's a very fitting addition, and that was funded by Mike Hosier through the Public Arts League. Pauline Tanos, our Public Arts intern, has been hired recently. She's been doing a lot of good work for us. Pauline holds a master's in arts administration, and she's helping greatly during the transition period before we get a new Public Arts Coordinator. The Urbana Arts Grants Program is also open for 2015. The deadline for applications is going to be January 16th. Economic Development Specialist Kate Ferrer has announced she will be moving to Cincinnati, Ohio. Her husband has accepted a position at Procter &amp; Gamble, and we'll miss her. She's done a lot of great work for us. And she's agreed to stay on to help make sure we meet our deadline for our enterprise zone application. So that's greatly appreciated. Urbana, I think, will have a very strong application in partnership with the county. All of the taxing partners we approached have now approved it. So it's just a matter of putting it all together, doing all the relevant analyses, and telling the story about our local workforce and local economy. And lastly, our Economic Development intern, Miles Thomas, has been doing some preliminary work on a Build It With Kaboom grant. And this program, it was done in Champaign somewhat recently. It funds the playground equipment, and these are typically installed with a lot of community help. And we're currently assessing sites in the Learmanet neighborhood, and other city departments are going to be helping with that effort as well. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Michael, you have a question?
So you mentioned the artwork at Boneyard was funded by Mike Hosier.
Mm-hmm.
So is that the piece that, describe to me what that is. It almost looks like whales or something?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, two big fish.
Or mammals, as it were.
Could be mammals, yeah.
Okay.
Marine organism.
Marine mammals?
Yeah. It's there to contemplate, yeah.
All right. So, yeah, all right. Okay, so that was one thing. So that was privately funded?
Through the Public Art League. So, yeah, private donors make contributions to the Public Art League, and some of those sculptures are cited in Urbana, some are cited in Champaign.
What an outstanding addition to public enhancement, some private funding of art, and I'd like to see more of it, frankly. My other question is, so on the concrete faces of some of the Boneyard, maybe I should already know this, but I don't, are those shrimp? Are those crawfish? What are those?
Spring tails, is that right?
Spring tail.
It's a tiny organism.
Is that an indigenous spring tail?
But they don't come that big in real life, though. They're much smaller.
I would hope not.
And in fact, we're going to make sure that the artist, Jack Mackey, who designed those, is going to be, is going to come out and talk about the features he incorporated into this project at the spring event.
All right. Yeah, I couldn't be at the ribbon cutting, and that's unfortunate, but I appreciate you educating me on what that is, and I've never heard of a spring tail in my life. So I'm glad they're indigenous, and they do look pretty cool. So they're intriguing. I'll put it that way.
Very good. And then Eric, do you have a comment on the question?
There are many more spring tails than people in Urbana, so they are your constituents.
You know, I grew up out in the, out in the country, so we, I don't think I, I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever experienced spring tails. It was more crawfish and all that kind of thing. Maybe I just didn't know what they were called, and they were there.
And I think it has to do with the size.
One comment.
Yes, Carol?
I just wanted to ask Brandon, I was really surprised by the closing of Strawberry Fields. And in the economic development report this week, had a, just a long list of closing businesses, unfortunately. I wanted to see if Economic Development has done any actual analysis with those business owners about why they were closing, in essence, obviously, we know they're not making money. But there has to be some real statistical analysis for us not being able to maintain a strong business climate in the city of Urbana with the number of closings we have and the turnover that we have. And I was interested in what Brandon's experience, or what he should be getting in experience to address this issue a little bit more with our business owners.
Do you want to respond to that?
Sure. We've reached out to all these folks and at various times to, for example, Strawberry Fields, we've been reaching out to for some time. But it has been the decision of the owner to make this choice for many months, and the property has been listed. I wouldn't say that, I know they're all showing up on this report now, but I think overall we can demonstrate that there has been a lot of business growth in Urbana in the last year. We just gave a update at the Business and Development Luncheon, which was a year in review, and we have many, many new and growing businesses in Urbana. So I would, I guess, encourage everyone to remember that this happens on a pretty regular basis. We have, we lose businesses. We celebrate their openings, but it's always good to, I guess, reflect on the contributions that have been made by businesses when they close. And we do reach out to those business owners, and in this case, each of them have closed, all because of lack of sales at their locations has been the main reasons we've heard.
And then Mayor Pressing?
I think there was a health issue at the Strawberry Fields owner, and I think it's important to point out that the business has been sold. So there's going to be a new business there by the end of January.
Well, this report has stemmed, brought forth a lot of questions. So, Bill?
I just wanted to also remind you that the art piece in front of the library, not the Stranger Reduction Zone, but the one on the street that replaced the thing that looked like a bench?
Right.
That was also partially funded by a private donation, Barack Rosenschein, from, through the Public Arts League.
Thank you.
And Eric?
So I just want to reinforce what Mayor Pressing said. I do believe that the issue with the sale of Strawberry Fields was not business, but was a health-related decision by the owner. And I, I'm cautiously optimistic, because you never know about a business, but I'm sort of optimistic that there'll be a thriving business there again very soon.
Okay. Thank you so much for the economic report. Other staff reports at this time? Okay, then we're going to move on. We have the next, the approval of minutes from a previous meeting on November 24th of 2014. Does anybody want to comment or make a motion of approval?
Move approval.
Diane Marlin?
Second.
Eric Jacobson seconds it. Were there corrections to the minutes? Anybody notice anything to be corrected? Okay. Those in favor of accepting them as printed, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Next, we have a public comment and input at this time, and we have two people who would like to speak at this time. First, I'll invite Emily Knox to come forward, please, and let us know what you wish to comment on.
I have slides, is that okay?
You may.
Okay.
And you have five minutes.
I'm here to talk about the fifth anniversary of Makerspace Urbana. My name is Emily Knox, and I'm a member of Makerspace Urbana. I'm also an assistant professor in the Graduate School of Library and Information Science at Illinois. I'm joined by my fellow member, Gergana Slavova. She is a software engineer at Intel. I'm here to talk about our fifth anniversary. Makerspace Urbana is a working group of the UC Independent Media Center, and this year we are celebrating our fifth anniversary. We started in 2009 as a group of about four people who decided that we needed a Makerspace here in this community. This year, we are also going to be embarking, well, in 2015, on both a capital campaign and also looking at expanding. I'm sure you're aware that the IMC is thinking about what they're going to do with their space on the first floor, and it's possible that we might be moving up there. So what is Makerspace Urbana? We are dedicated to enabling the blend of arts, humanities, science, and technology. Our mission is to provide an open community lab where people of diverse backgrounds can learn, teach, tinker, collaborate, share, innovate, socialize, and create. What I like to say is that we provide space, tools, and expertise for anything that people would like to learn how to make. We're part of the maker movement, and this might be a term that is familiar to many of you. The maker movement is an international movement of basically providing a community space. I'm sure you're also familiar with, for example, the Fab Lab on campus, also the Maker Lab that's also on campus. There's been some talk that the maker movement could, as you see here, change how science is taught and boost innovation. It may even herald a new industrial revolution. I always think of the maker movement as being a continuation of both the arts and crafts movement and the DIY movement. It's really a time where you can learn how to take the things that we see in our industrialized world, learn how they're made, and make them yourself. This is just a map of maker and hacker spaces around the world. You can see that there are many. I've had to update this map several times since I started with Makerspace about two years ago. We are, you can see how many are in the United States and then across the world. So what are some of the things that we do at Makerspace Urbana? These are just some pictures. We often have groups come through to learn how to solder. Here we are making wands, which are light up with LEDs. Here, we have people learning how to knit. This is a, learning about technology. So one of the things we do is demystifying technology, how people take apart computers, put them back together. We also run the Community Help Desk, if you're familiar with the Community Help Desk. They're open from, I believe, 2:00 to 4:00 on Sundays, and you can stop by with your computer, and someone will both, will help you learn how to fix it. I think this is a 3D printing workshop. So we have a 3D printer at our Makerspace and many other tools that are available. Here's some other things. I think this is doing throwees, so learning how, one of our favorite things to do is integrate both crafts and technology. So we tend to make things and then put LEDs on them or make them light up.
You have one minute, Ms. Knox.
Okay. Here's sewing and some others. Here are some projects that we work on on a regular basis. We also run PyQ, which is the Python Users Workshop, and we also help with Shimbana.net. We are also, our main event of the year is the Heartland Maker Fest, which used to be the Mini Maker Fair, which is a major event that's supported by the Arts Commission and the Urbana Business Association, where we try to inspire, empower, and connect. We had approximately 1,200 to 1,400 people come through this year. We'll be having our fifth anniversary on December 15th from 7:00 to 9:00. You're all welcome to stop by for food, drinks, and making things. And we're open on a regular basis on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 7:00 to 9:00, and Saturdays from 11:00 to 1:00. Please find us on Facebook.
And Emily, the location of that event is going to be IMC? Is that correct?
Yes, we're located in the basement of the IMC.
Okay. Thank you for reporting that. That's a very interesting project. Five years?
Yes.
Go ahead, Carol.
I just wanted to thank Emily for coming and sharing the Makerspace information with us tonight. I think something that I'd like to highlight for the Makerspace is that it also does really interesting workshops in the community for children, exposing them to technology, soldering, 3D printing, things that they don't get into their normal educational sessions at school. But the Makerspace has made many projects over the summer and participated in summer projects all over the community to expose children to, again, demystifying technology was one of the bigger aspects of the Makerspace. And so I applaud you all on your five years, and hopefully I'll be able to come by at some point on the 15th.
Thank you so much.
We all need to know how to use pliers.
I'm intrigued by the fact that your academic appointment is in Library and Information Science, and I'm wondering if there, across the nation or across the world, there's any integration of this kind of space with public libraries?
Yes, there is. As a matter of fact, the Urbana Free Library has a teen Fab Lab, which Makerspace Urbana also helps set up. This was also done, I believe, with a grant that was developed through the school at Gislis, and it's available for teens to go to after school. And I believe anybody can stop by and take a look, but yes, definitely.
Yeah, Michael?
Yeah, I just have to say, this is the first I've heard of you, and that's my fault. I think it's a very cool thing you're doing. I guess my, one of my questions would be, what is your source of funding to survive for five years? I shouldn't say survive, to thrive for five years. How's that?
So our main source of funding, we have key members who have access to the space 24/7, and they pay a monthly fee to do that. We also get grants, so that's another source. We also are working on getting more sustainers to help fund us. But basically, grants and key members, and as a working project, as a working project of the IMC, we get fairly cheap rent, and they are the ones who help us with our nonprofit status and our finances. So it's really just our operations that cost.
Do you mind me asking what a key member is?
Sure. So as a key member, you, basically, you can come to the space at any point. So we have keys to obviously get into the IMC and also into our space. So if you have a project that you'd like to do, say, tonight, when we're not open, you can stop by and use the tools. And we have about 12 key members at the moment.
Okay, very interesting. You know, something that I should have mentioned earlier during the Economic Development Report is that the main reason most startups fail in this community and in all communities is the lack of capitalization.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, you know, all businesses, mine, anyone's, capitalization is key. And if you don't have the capital to withstand the early years, you fail. So clearly, you've been doing something, doing something right to keep that going. But that is what we're experiencing in downtown Urbana to a degree, and it's not unlike any other community across the country. A lot of people have great ideas. It's can you generate the capital to keep it going until it's profitable? And that's the key.
I would say it's really the support of the IMC that has helped us stay afloat. They are the ones who really ensure that we don't have, we don't have too many, too much that we have to pay for every month. And that has really helped us.
Do you collaborate with the school district at all?
Sometimes we go into schools. I know I personally have gone into one of the Champaign schools. If we are asked to come in, we're happy to do that, and we have several different projects that we can bring with us.
I would encourage you to, you probably already have, but reach out to Urbana, because it sounds to me like these are the type of things that kids ought to be exposed to, extracurricular, because they can be outstanding life skills.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to invite Danny Otto to come forward and let us know what you'd like to speak about, and you have five minutes.
I'm Danny Otto. I live at 405 West Illinois, and I would like to speak about item 15 on your agenda, the resolution requesting the University of Illinois to open a public discussion of the impact of Carl taxation and billing practices on the local community and the university. This is an issue that's very important to me personally, as well as all of the residents and businesses of the community. In the home that I've spent the last decade restoring several blocks from here, my real estate taxes went up close to $1,000 in one year, and this is a vision of more to come over the next several years. So this is a matter of a great deal of urgency to the taxpayers of the city, and many of them at this point aren't really aware of the circumstances. They think that all of the taxing units have been reckless with their spending, which generally I don't think has been the case. I support the resolution, but I would like to urge you to consider rephrasing it in two key ways. Rather than generally requesting the university, which could result in getting some mid-to-upper level PR person to have a meeting at a place and time of their choosing, make the invitation to the chancellor and the president. And rather than the vague public discussion, this is something that's very specific to the residents of Urbana, and you, as the city council and the mayor, represent us. And so I would change the title of this invitation to requesting the University of Illinois President and Chancellor to engage in a public discussion with the mayor and council representing the residents of Urbana. And then, in order that it not be held someplace, the university has a lot of fine auditoriums, but the city also has a civic center that would be a place that has parking and it would be accessible to the residents. I think this is a discussion that you should initiate and you should take some control over, because too much of this is taking place in meetings that are not accessible to the public. And due to Freedom of Information requests by Andrew Sheinem, it turns out that the university spoke with the Illinois Health Facilities Board on the recent hearing about the Carl expansion. University employees went to that hearing in Chicago at university expense and spoke on behalf of that expansion, although another public institute- public institution adjacent to the university, another hospital in town opposed it. Um, there's a lot of interesting information. It seems like, uh, there could be a alliance between, uh, a public institution that is owned by the taxpayers of the state with a private institution that doesn't have the same sort of accountability that we expect from a public institution. So, um, I think this is important for the long-term health of this city. We can't afford to have, uh, the two largest businesses in town not pay their fair share of the expense of maintaining the infrastructure of this community that makes it an attractive and livable place. So I urge you to proceed with this, uh, to be very public about it, uh, to publicly invite the chancellor and, and the incoming president to meet with the public, to talk about what's going on and to hear the concerns we have so that Urbana can continue to be a diverse community that's an attractive place to live for many decades. Thank you.
And, um, any comments or questions? Mayor Prossing?
I want to say that, um, when we talk, when I wrote this, it is to the university administration and the faculty. And I want it to be a public discussion, a series of discussions, and it, to have it be very public. And I think this affects the entire community more than just Urbana. But certainly the brunt of it is in Urbana. But, um, if we have higher health insurance costs than Chicago, which is what Health Alliance said publicly a few years ago, that affects the entire community. That's an economic development problem for us. And I think we need to be able to measure what these problems are and talk about what the solutions are. So it's, it's meant to be very public. And I, I will be talking with the chancellor on Friday at, and I, um, I, I want to start it now. I don't want to wait until the new president comes in because this is, this is a complicated problem. And I did go to the hearing, uh, which was, um, not in Chicago, it was outside of Chicago. I can't remember the name of the place, but...
North of Interstate eighty.
Yeah, so I went to that. And, um, I, I do think that the university has to pay attention to the community as well as to the needs of the largest business in the community.
I agree that there are a whole range of problems related to the role of CARL in the community. But I urge you to not try to address all of them and lose focus on the very concrete thing that will, will start affecting the housing market and driving people out. And, you know, ironically, the highly paid people that could be attracted because of the medical school or the research opportunities will choose to live in low-tax communities several miles out rather than here in our neighborhood if we don't address this. So hopefully, in trying to address a whole range of issues that need public airing, that we prioritize and keep the heat on the tax issue because that's so immediate and it rolls around. We're only months away from the next round of taxes and we'll all be shocked once again.
Thank you very much then, Danny. Oh, Mike, did you want to comment?
Oh, I do. So, um, you are aware that for the first forty-seven years of CARL's existence, they didn't pay property taxes. Are you not?
I don't know the whole history of CARL paying property taxes, but the nature...
You just know what happened to your property taxes right now?
Uh, if you ask a question, I'll respond. But if I get interrupted, I'll just leave. I don't know the whole history of, uh, CARL and property taxes. I know the nature of the institution has changed dramatically over the last forty-seven years and very dramatically over the last twenty years, which is why, uh, the tax issue came to the fore. And through rulings all the way to Illinois Supreme Court, tax was, uh, CARL was not deemed to be a charity.
Well, the bottom line is, uh, CARL existed in this community and has been a driving force of the economic expansion of this community for the last forty-five years. They're the number two employer, uh, as you well know, uh, in this community. Um, and I, while I, I am fully supportive of, uh, public, uh, meetings, public, uh, get-togethers, uh, to discuss and probably for the most part vilify CARL, um, I think it's very important for people to understand that for forty-seven years of their existence, they did not pay property taxes and they were a major economic driver and today remain a major economic driver in this community. So after forty-seven years of not paying property taxes, then, um, they all of a sudden, um, because of the rapacious, uh, um, taxing, um, uh, needs of local bodies, um, they get glommed on, okay? They get, uh, they get sucked in, um, to being a taxing body. And they have to fight that. And frankly, I don't blame them. They're a nonprofit institu- institution. And I know everybody, um, wants to talk about, oh, they made a hundred and five million dollars one year. Well, you know what? When you're talking about billions of dollars of revenue, that's a very small margin and it doesn't always happen to be a hundred and five million. That's one year. The other thing is public accountability. They file with the Attorney General of the State of Illinois every year, all of their financials. They're not playing around. They're not playing shell games. They are, they are producing their financials to the State of Illinois in toto. So I just, I just find this whole, this whole vilification of CARL frankly repugnant.
Okay, can I come?
Absolutely repugn- no, you may not interrupt.
Yeah, I think I can because I'm the chairman. And I'd like to say that...
Oh, well, okay then.
The, um, okay, I would just like to say that, um, public comment is a chance for the public to express their interests and their concerns to the city council. It's really not a debate platform. And I think that we're supposed to be listening to them with understanding and appreciation. And if you have a question that is specific...
Very well. I'll reserve my comments for the, uh, resolution.
Exactly. That's the appropriate thing. And not to, um, to put pressure or to repel people from wanting to come forward to the city council and speak their mind. So, thanks very much again, Danny. And, um, I just would like, I think that...
For the record, I said nothing to vilify CARL.
Thank you then, Dan. Yeah. And I think, I think we just want to do, uh, comment on this, um, as part of the appropriate procedure for public input.
All right.
Let's move on to the ordinances and question for tonight. Ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash twelve dash one one two and ordinance amending chapter fifteen, miscellaneous offenses and provisions of the City of Urbana Code to provide for the regulation of alarm systems and false alarms. And, uh, for the police department, Chief Kindly and Assistant Chief...
Good evening, everybody. Uh, about a year ago, all of the city departments were asked to look at some possible cost-saving measures within their own departments. I brought that back to the leadership team of the police department and unanimously they identified the alarm ordinance issue as one of the possible measures that we could look at. So I asked Deputy Chief Sylvia Morgan to look into that. And this evening, rather than me reiterate what she found, I'm going to ask that Sylvia present it to you so that if you have any questions concerning it or issues, we could certainly address it collectively.
Good evening. As the chief said, I'm Sylvia Morgan. I'm the Deputy Chief of Police. And when I started looking at the issue of alarm calls that police respond to, I found overwhelmingly that it was one of the higher percentages of the calls that we responded to. In fact, as you have some information in a memo that I put in the packet, but for those that don't have that information, I wanted to share that, um, in two thousand and twelve, we responded to a collectively at two, twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine calls for service. And of those, eleven hundred and twenty-three of them were alarm calls, which is just almost five and a half percent of our call volume. Um, of those eleven hundred and twenty-three, only ten of those calls revealed that an actual crime had occurred, that the police were needed at the premises. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen, it was even more. We had twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four calls for service. Thirteen hundred and twenty-five of those were alarm calls, which is just over six percent of our call volume. Of those thirteen hundred and twenty-five, only five of those calls revealed an actual crime had occurred and the police were needed there for either criminal damage or an actual burglary or some other, some other crime. Taking that into account, I found that the amount of time that police officers were spending because an alarm call generally takes two police officers, a minimum of two police officers to respond to that type of a call for service and was able to come up with a quantity, I guess, for that that's costing the city in the neighborhood of, uh, just on, just under twenty-one thousand dollars to deal with those calls for service when most of them weren't, weren't even, excuse me, weren't even, uh, calls, calls that needed, the police needed to be there for. We did look at, saw, a lot of municipalities have, have alarm ordinances and we took a look at a lot of those. And then, uh, the police department, legal, the information technology and finance department sat down and looked at those and came up with something that we thought was more along the lines of the way, um, Urbana residents, um, was something that would fit our community better. Champaign has a false, excuse me, an alarm ordinance as well that addresses show-up fees for false alarms. They are currently in the process of revamping that. And it is in the study session at, as at, at this time, I believe in January, they're going to look at finalizing that. Um, we did look at that very closely because a lot of the commute, or excuse me, a lot of the businesses that are in Urbana will also have a business in Champaign. And so we wanted to try to at least remain somewhat similar to what they were doing and not, you know, not be way off the mark from what they were doing. Um, so our initial registration fee, as the memo says, would be a fifty dollar registration fee basically to, um, get, gather all the information on the, uh, residents or the, the business and who the responding people were, um, so that we, so we have some people's names and that are responsible for the alarms. And then the annual regi- re-renewal registration fee would be twenty-five dollars would be half of that. Champaign's proposed, the last I know, I suppose some things that could possibly have changed in the study session that I'm unaware of. So I wanted to clarify with that. They also had a fifty dollar registration fee and a twenty dollar renewal fee. Um, we also talked about having a, a minimal ten dollar fee for if someone were to move during the year and needed to transfer their information to a different location. So we wanted to include some minimal fee for their processing of that information and changing the record information on that. Then the setup fee for, for the actual false alarms, uh, being everyone, everyone makes mistakes. So we, we talked about being, uh, at least people get, having two, uh, chances before they, to have, make mistakes. And, and then on the third time, once the, the third time we've come to the same residence or business, having a fee start at a hundred dollars for that. Um, hundred and fifty, well, from three, three false alarms up to nine false alarms would be a hundred dollars. And then tenth false alarm and up would be a hundred and fifty. And for those that choose not to register their alarm and, you know, maybe they think they're never going to have a false alarm and they want to just gamble and take that chance, um, there's a two hundred dollar fee for that, uh, for the alarm that's, if it's not registered in the city of Urbana. Now, there's some other, um, information. There's, there, we, we were going to notify everyone when they have a false alarm so they have a chance to dispute, you know, what, what caused the alarm and maybe have, they have some information about a malfunction with their alarm that we're unaware of or something along that lines. So there's an opportunity for everyone to be notified that when they have an alarm that we consider false, for them to, to rebut that and, uh, ask for some consideration. Also giving people fourteen days of, of, uh, a grace period after they have an alarm installed so that they get, once they're getting used to the alarm, they can, they can, you know, have some, some gap there for, for, you know, being, becoming familiar with the alarm. And, uh, that, the fee schedule for ours is, is very similar to what Champaign's is as well, as far as the, the show-up fees that they're char- they're proposing in their alarm ordinance as well. I think that covers most of the basics, but I certainly, I, I understand that there are some, there may be some other questions that I haven't, haven't covered yet.
For, for the benefit of the audience and for myself as well, can you explain what is a false alarm and who is ma- who is, um, who is setting up the alarm system? Those are two things. Um, so what, what happens when it's a false alarm? You, you've, you've received an alarm, there's been an alarm set off. How do you determine then that that was not a valid alarm call?
Most of the time what will happen is that we'll have an alarm, uh, when it goes off, it goes to the alarm monitoring company. Most, most alarms have alarm monitoring companies, um, attached to them. They then try to reach a responder to see if it's actual alarm, uh, a, excuse me, a valid alarm or not. So they'll call the responding people they have on their list. If they can't reach anyone or they say, um, out of town, I don't know why my alarm is going off, then they will call the dispatch center and they'll send police officer. Um, like I said earlier, we generally would send two police officers. Um, what, what will happen a majority of the time is we respond to a house and there's, we check all the doors, we check all the windows, we walk all the way around the property and to the, through the backyard to make sure there hasn't been some breach of the residence in some fashion, either a window or a door or, or anything out of the ordinary. And, and then that would be determined as a false alarm because there was no indication as to why that alarm would have gone off. No one was home, no windows were broken, no doors were ajar and things of that nature. Did that make sense in answer your question?
Yeah, and I have other questions, but perhaps council members will. So I'll open it up to, um, is your presentation then done and I'll, I'll open it up to, to the council members' questions?
Yeah, I, whatever questions you have would be fine. I'm sure I didn't cover everything. I apologize.
I know, I have a lot of questions. But, okay, Diane Marlin?
I sent you some of them earlier today, so I'll just ask them. Um, so what are the causes of false alarms? Is it mechanical? Is it human error? I mean, ninety-nine point five percent of these things are, are, are dysfunctional. So I don't, honestly, I don't understand why anyone even has an alarm system if it's so...
Right. And sometimes it is mechanical, but that's, that's a rarity. Most of the time it is some type of human error. In fact, um, a lot of times people have like motion detectors and then they will have brought home, uh, balloon bouquet for their kid's, you know, birthday or something. And that's, ends up setting off a motion detector alarm or something of that nature. So there are, I would say the majority of the, the, them are human error.
Okay. And is it mostly residential or commercial established properties?
It's slight, it's, it's more, uh, commercial than it is residential.
Okay. And then are, are there certain addresses where you get just an over-the-top number of false alarms?
There were...
Would they get special treatment or is everybody going to be treated the same?
Well, that, there is a provision for that in the ordinance where we talk about, uh, the ability for us to have a limited response to certain addresses. And that's, that's not what we want to do. Uh, we don't want to say, we're ne- we're not responding to your house or business anymore because we've gotten so many alarms there. But, uh, we are trying to get people to be a little more cognizant of how they handle their alarms and if they're training their employees properly on how to, how to handle them and, and their neighbors that's watching their dog, you know, are you teaching them how to use this alarm so that we're not having these problems? Um, so, over, uh, I just completely lost my train of thought. I apologize.
The frequent, frequent, well, no, people, the, people who have the most frequent...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And so what I wanted to say was they were, that, last year, the, the two highest number of responses, one had fifty-some, like fifty-two, I believe, and the other one had seventy-some.
Were these businesses?
One was a business and one was a government agency. And we actually have met with the government agency and have, and met with the alarm company that handles that, that agency. And we, um, they worked very closely and tried to, there was a malfunction happening on that, a particular, that particular, one of the doors in that alarm system. And since that time, that number has dropped drastically on that, that particular case.
But this ordinance won't find other government agencies or public agencies?
Correct.
Okay. One more. So, I, I understand the reasoning behind this proposal and I do think it's important to register alarms. And we want to de, we want to minimize the number of false alarms is...
Correct.
Have other communities that you researched done similar things? And has there been a significant effect on the numbers of false alarms?
Yes. This, uh, definitely is, um, the, they, their false alarms, they've documented a drop in their false alarms for, once they've implemented their, uh, their alarm ordinance.
I know. One, one of my concerns was the disparity in the fee between Champaign, Champaign's fee originally was ten dollars. So when I...
Correct.
So when I saw the fifty dollar proposed for Urbana, I didn't want such a disparity.
Sure. And my understanding from Champaign, they've had that art ordinance since I think the mid-eighties. mid 80s and they had not, and they, a couple of things that they learned from this was the renewal registration, number one, because they have a list of alarm registrations that they didn't require renewals on. And so it goes, it's 25 years worth of alarms and they don't know if the people still live there or don't live there. So that was one thing they learned and so we incorporated that into ours as well. And, and like I said, I, we tried to be similar to, very similar to their fee structure as well, just so that, for the reasons I already spoke about.
Can I have one more question?
Yeah, you might as well. You should get all your questions out.
Okay, then I think I'm done. So this sounds like where you have an alarm coordinator who is a member of the police department, correct?
Correct.
Will, will the anticipated revenues cover the costs of setting up this program?
Yeah, and I, I, let me find my notes here. Yeah, and then I have the other one where it's broke down better. Hang on. I have it all, there's just a lot. All right, so I think based off of the initial registrations for the, the initial, the year once we set this up, based on, I got a number of alarms that one of the biggest alarm companies in, in the city had. I asked for their number, how many, how many alarms do you service in the city of Urbana? And I got the number from them and then from a couple smaller alarm companies as well. And then did an estimate about, based from that and also the numbers of alarms, because there were a lot of alarms that, at residents or businesses that only had one or two alarms through the year. So they're not included in my, of course, in my totals here. So there were a lot of those. So I got the estimate of about somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 alarms. And I could be way off. There could be a lot more people that have alarms that never have a false alarm, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 alarms. And based on that and the revenue for those, the registration from those would pay for, the first year would pay for the setting up of the computer system, the, the information technology. I had them give me an estimate on what it would cost to build this system into, you know, the automated system into, you know, pulling the information from the CAD service and then generating the notification letters and things of that nature. And the alarm coordinator is going to physically look into the CAD system at each alarm and make sure that, say for instance, the, the dispatch ticket got coded appropriately, that it really was a false alarm. So they're, they're going to make sure and look at the, the tickets as well, instead of just blindly going by what the dispatcher put in, making sure that it was put in correctly before we send out, before we make a determination that they're a false alarm.
And if I may just add one more point, I think it's important that ultimately what we're trying to do is reduce the number of times that police officers, two or more, sometimes four, depending on the business, are responding to 90% false alarms. So we first need to educate the people. And the way we do that is we get them registered, we educate them on the program, we give them an opportunity, because we're human and we make mistakes, to make a few mistakes, but hopefully they're going to pay, pay a little bit more attention to the fact that the, the limited number of resources that we have available at the police department are 90% of the times going to well over 800 calls that were unwarranted. So ultimately, our goal is to reduce the number of false alarms. We have found this to be a very productive way of doing that through other municipalities.
Other questions for the chief and on this topic? Bill Brown?
So right now, is there any kind of fine for a false alarm at all?
Not for the police department.
Okay, the fire department has a big fine. So, what, I understand the educational part of wanting them to register, but what if you just started charging a fine for false alarms? Why would that not be sufficient? I mean, rather than going through the registration process and having to hire somebody to manage that, why not just charge $100, you know, keep track of which ones have three false alarms and start charging $100 or something after that?
One of the purposes of the registration fee is to know who's, who's the responsible party at the alarm premises. There are a lot of, excuse me, there's a lot of rental properties where people may have an alarm installed. Are, is the, is the property owner going to take, take care of those and then charge his tenant, or is the tenant the one responsible for those, those types of things? That's one of the reasons why we wanted to have their, the registration. Also, along with that, the, the alarm companies supply us with their procedures and we've already, again, spoken with the, one of the biggest alarm companies in town and spoke to them about having a call, the enhanced verification of having at least two different people to call or two different numbers to call prior to calling the police department, so that that kind of can help vet out some of these, some of the false alarms, rather than just having one to call. I'm sorry.
One more point I think is kind of important. Oftentimes, and when Sylvia was describing the, the, the basic response to an alarm, to whether it was false or not, when the police officers respond to that location. The next step in that process is we ask MedCAD, our dispatcher, to contact a key holder or go through the alarm company. That person then responds and then we actually walk through the house, the house, to ensure that there isn't any property damage or any theft that we may have missed. Oftentimes, for instance, if we didn't have a registration process, routinely, we would be responding to those alarms and not making sure that we've done, provided that service to the community, which is to try to walk through the, the business or through the residence to make sure that things are okay. So it helps us better identify it, plus it gives us a proper key holder, which is kind of an important part of this whole process.
Other questions? Yeah, Michael. We'll give, we'll give Michael a chance and then Carol, I'll call on you.
Thank you.
So, as a business owner in the city of Urbana, I'm not going to disclose whether or not I have an alarm system, but, but what I would say is I, I, I'm a business license holder in the city of Urbana. So I'm not quite understanding how anyone who owns a business in Urbana and is registered as a business owner in Urbana and pays a fee for that currently would not be on the radar of the city as the responsible party for that, for that address. And so if I had a, an alarm system at the same time, there's a nexus. So, any business in the city of Urbana is already known to the city. So I don't see a need for an additional fee for an additional registration, i.e. an additional business burden. Please explain that to me.
Well, with respect to business owners being, being known to the city, I can tell you on, on numerous occasions, the police department has made efforts to contact various identified business owners who haven't changed their contact information, changed their management without notifying the police department, routinely running into issues where the police were unable to contact one of the business owners and we would literally clear the alarm call without having the ability to go in because we didn't have current information. Now, I can tell you our police service representative, Karen Snyder, and her crew tried tremendously hard to try to maintain a current list, but quite honestly, the, the, the owners, the business, a lot of the business owners in this community, when they change management, they don't want to be notified. You're very responsible and you do want to be notified. Oftentimes, business owners say, "I have management to do that and I don't need to be called at 2:00 in the morning." So as a result, our current contact information is way outdated and we end up clearing without notifying anybody. So, and the following morning, we then send a police officer additional work to go back to that business, notify the day manager that we had an event there last night.
Well, I, I, I think really what this has brought to light to me is, is we have a business license, I have a fire permit, so now this would be an additional registration. So I would have three different registrations with the city. It seems to me that a prudent business practice of the city would be to coordinate these activities, to charge a business one fee, a business fee which encompasses fire, alarm, whatever interaction with the city. It just makes sense, from a, from a, from, from my perspective as a business owner, to get, to get hit one time from the city and to be responsive to one entity of the city in a coordinated fashion. And it makes eminent sense from, from the city, the regulator's perspective, to gather that information one time as opposed to two or three or four. A liquor license is another. So I mean, you know, there were multiple contacts that a business has with the city and what we probably ought to look at is a one-stop-shop approach in lieu of multiple fees and multiple registrations and multiple, ultimately, multiple contacts the business has to make to the city, which frankly discourages current information. It discourages the business from, it just becomes too much. You know, different dates of compliance, different contacts to make, all those kinds of things. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to shed a little light on, from the business owner's perspective, about how this could frankly be a detriment to somebody saying, "You know what? It's not worth it to me to have an alarm anymore." And I don't want that to happen. What I would rather have happen is the city says, "We want you to do business here. We want you to have easy contact with the city. We're going to have one portal where you keep your business information current." And frankly, I don't, I would agree with Bill. I question the need for the fee for that. I would think what we ought to do is make an online portal for businesses to keep their information accurate. And if they don't, well, then it's on them. You know, then it's on them. But if there's a one-stop-shop for that online, that just makes eminent sense to me. I, I have, I have further questions about residential. I live in, well, I live in the same neighborhood you do.
Right.
We got a lot of geese. They fly into the windows once in a while. What if I'm not home and a goose pounds the window and sets off the alarm?
The first time we'll accept it, the second time, I guess the third time, we would maybe look at some other options. I don't know. I mean, we would have to, I don't have an answer for you.
The other option being a fine because a goose ran into my window.
Right. I, I don't know if that's an experience you encounter like routinely. It sounds like you might.
No, I haven't, but I'm just, I'm, I'm, look, I'm, I'm throwing out things that, it's, hey, we live with some wildlife out there, you know?
Sure.
But I guess my question is if someone's not home and, and something sets the alarm off, a weather occurrence, wildlife.
Right.
It could be a, I mean, it could be a repeated occurrence and I just, those kinds of things concern me. I don't want people discouraged, to be discouraged from, from buying or activating alarms, because here's the other thing. What if people are discouraged from alarming their home? And what if they're burglarized? What's the cost to the city then to have to investigate that burglary? I, that's, that's a question that's unanswered in this whole analysis. How many times, if we do discourage folks from alarming their homes, are we going to increase the cost to the police department? Because now all of a sudden, we have more property crimes that we have to deal with.
Right. And I think we need to look at a balance. And I think that's what Sylvia tried to present to you of the, of the, hypothetically, the 100 alarms, 90 of them are false. Now, you're right, those 10% of the time, we actually catch people in the act. And that's wonderful. And I'm a, I'm a, I wish everybody had an alarm. It makes the police department's job much easier, but it has to be managed appropriately. And oftentimes, people just take it for granted that I have an alarm system, the police are going to come nine times to the same dwelling and there's no consequence for that. So somewhere, we need to reach a balance that says, the police department's expending, the city is expending this amount of money on these false alarm calls, the responsibility to the homeowner is nothing. At some point, we have to hold some folks accountable. So this is what was recommended a year ago.
Well, you know, I appreciate the work you guys do, I really do. And I think there probably needs to be a little bit more work on this. I, I would tend to agree that I think the registration fee ought to be dropped and we ought to look at, we ought to look at a comprehensive, unified portal for businesses and residents to keep their information current with the city, thereby avoiding additional registration fees and frankly, the expense of the city to monitor that then. And then, and then maybe a, an education and then warning and then fine structure, you know, in that order, to try to address the real problem.
All right. We, we also have Carol Ammons that would like to ask a question. Carol, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I also wanted to, I share many of the thoughts that Alderman Madigan just expressed. I, I went through the memo and I was really concerned about adding, of course, a fee. And I would be supportive of possibly a small fee just to encourage people to register their alarms, but the, the penalty phase is where I, I kind of got stuck. I managed a business in Urbana for a number of years and because the business was 100 years old, the building was, often the fire alarm would be set off by just any number of weather occurrences, water dripping or, anything would, in essence, would set that alarm off. It is managed by a local company who tries to do a good job with the alarm system, but the reality is weather did trigger the alarm numerous times. And that was not because the management did not take care of the alarm, but in essence, the weather triggered the alarm on a regular basis. So that would be concerning to me. I also think that until we try to kind of work our way up to fee schedules, since people already have to pay annual fire alarm inspections, they have to pay a fee for that, the fee schedule on the fire department side is pretty long already, I really don't think we should add a fee schedule. I think we should certainly do some combination of what is already present and possibly add a few additional dollars to our business license or residential fees when people are building their homes and installing these things. I think these just turn into additional taxes in the city of Urbana. And we already have on the horizon, increasing tax fees in the city of Urbana that is going to ultimately take us over what the fees are in the city of Champaign, even if we kept this particular fee low. I think we should reevaluate every single fee we charge in the city of Urbana, try to give relief to residents and businesses as opposed to causing more cost for those residents, and look at a way to reduce the false alarms that are less punitive and more, at least systematic before we institute a fee structure.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Eric Jacobson?
Yeah, I, as, as I am understanding the, the philosophy behind the construction of this ordinance, what it's trying to do is not to impose more burdens on the taxpayers and the residents of the city, but to shift those burdens from everybody else to people whose false alarms go off really, really often. And I, I, now I guess there will be, there will be a cost for registering the alarm. I think this is an honest attempt to, to strike a balance. I'm attracted to the idea of a single portal. We have our IT person here, I believe, who could comment on how big a job it would be to set such a thing up. I, I'm not sure that that would be, that would be trivial, but, but, but a quick comment on that might be, might be illuminating.
All right, we're going to have Stanford Hesk, who's going to comment on that comment or question.
Thank you for asking. The biggest challenge with having the single portal is the splintered information. Take, for example, the fire registration, which is maintained in the fire department's firehouse database. City registration of businesses is in one database. This would fortunately be on, sort of near the city's database, so there could be some combination, but no matter what, you're talking about- But no matter what you're talking about, as long as different departments have their separate systems for different things, the unified portal's kind of tough to achieve. It certainly exists as a goal, and it would more be a long-term, sort of, you know, strategy that we would want to move closer and closer to the nirvana of a single place that you could go and do all your business with the city. But it is going to take time to reach that point.
Thanks for that comment. Yeah, Mayor?
I just want to say, we don't have a business license. We have, we license liquor establishments and restaurants have to have a license, but we don't license businesses in general.
We do, and I, my details on this are vague, but we do have a file of data on various businesses.
But they're not paying a license, right? Well, you do because you're a restaurant.
I had a, I had a fairly lengthy dialogue with, with Beth Beatty about this several months ago. I have a, I have a city license just to do business in the city of Urbana, and that is the sole purpose of the license.
Okay, there you go. I've got one question, so maybe I could ask. Michael, would you take over the chair so I could raise my hand?
I will take over the chair.
All right, so I have a question.
Where's the? I recognize Dennis.
Thank you very much. One of the, you know, I have two thoughts. One is that it's possible to have an alarm go out because there is a situation that's actually happening in a backyard, but because a window hasn't been broken, what we find is the alarm has deterred the entry or the breakage of a window. So there is potential to have crime events deterred by the alarm. But if that, if there were no, what, you're not going to look for footprints in the snow or whatever, because you're going to go there and find nothing wrong. But perpetrator who might have created something has been already scared by the alarm, so it's become a useful tool. We don't want to have people penalized for their alarms working the way they're supposed to work. The second thing that I have a question about is, on page seven, item number five, this is an item, this is enumerated list under false alarms. Item five reads, "There shall be a rebuttal presumption that all alarm signals constitute a false alarm until such time as the alarm coordinator determines that the alarm signal signaled the presence of a actual or reasonably perceived emergency, or the commission of a crime on the premises, or the occurrence of other activity reasonably warranting prompt dispatch of the police department." I find it extremely, a big concern of mine, that this document indicates that all alarm signals coming to the police department will be assumed to be false alarms unless something, somebody, a coordinator, alarm coordinator, determines that it's a true emergency. I don't, I think this is like really an unfortunate aspect of this ordinance as it stands today.
Then, that's my question, if you have any rebuttal or information about that comment? That, that?
I was going to ask him if he wanted to.
That wording?
Some of that was legal, some of the legal terminology, and I...
Mr. Simon.
The reason that that was inserted is based on the statistics that, if you look at the preponderance of alarms, ninety percent of them are generally false alarms. So what you're, a change in that presumption that all alarms are valid alarms assumes that ten percent controls the universe of alarms, rather than the ninety percent, which appears to be the predominance of alarms, i.e. false alarms. Now, the one thing that wasn't talked about in the discussion so far is there are these numbers of false alarms with the fees related thereto. This is within a twelve-month period. This is not just for the life of the alarm or the life that the alarm is at the premises. So it's two freebies in a twelve-month period. So you get two geeses, or gooses.
Geese.
Geese. Get two animals to go plowing into the window. And then after that, it begins to ramp up. But throughout the ordinance is sprinkled due process, where police and the property owner can get together to see if, if the, while it may have been a false alarm, it may have been something completely out of control of the property owner. And with, with trying to find out why the thing went off and an effort to correct it. If there's a problem with the alarm, whether it's the building that Alder Person Ammons talks about, or whether, I know up in Chicago, sometimes airplanes fly over and set off these things. It may be changing frequencies of the alarms and all. So there, there are stopgaps, rather than just assuming and then finding or charging fees.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Roberts, with respect to the deterring the burglar, on an audible alarm, I would wholeheartedly agree with you, but we're talking about silent alarms. We're talking, so the burglar wouldn't even know that he or she set an alarm off if they rattled a window, as, as the example that you used. But when the police officer responds, they do actually look. We've caught several burglars because of footwear that we found in the snow. So the officer does, when he or she does their walk-around of the dwelling, they do look for signs of tampering. They look for signs. Now, if there's no visible broken window, that is probably a good indication that there was no forced entry. But typically, on the alarms that we respond to, rarely are they inside the home, they are motion. But the exterior, by merely rattling a window, typically those alarms aren't the ones that we respond to. Does that make sense?
So you're saying that most of the alarms are silent alarms?
That's correct. Right.
Okay. That's the end of my question. So I'll take the chair back. Yeah, Diane Marlin.
Do the tenant, if, if there's an alarm in an apartment building, I mean, I'm assuming the tenants don't even know that the building's alarmed a lot of times, right? Or, I mean, just getting at the reason of human error causing these things.
I can't think of any alarm, or, excuse me, apartment complex that has an alarm for the building, building. Some of them have individual apartment alarms. They used to. I'm not even sure those, I know the ones up, that I'm thinking on North Lincoln don't even have those anymore because there were so many problems with them. But that's, that's not generally how, how, I can't think of any apartment complex that has it go.
All right, I didn't know. So getting to this human error and the fact that you said that most of these false alarms are caused by people just not remembering how to use the thing, it seems like the alarm company needs to do a better job of educating their customers when they set these things up, and that they ought to have some responsibility here.
Right. Now, don't forget, I, I think, you know, we, we tried to share a great deal of information with you. And on those occasions, for instance, where you come home hypothetically, and you punch in the alarm and you say, oops, it's the wrong number, and the alarm is set off, and you pick up the phone and you say, hey, alarm company, I just made a mistake. They validate that through a series of questions, at which point the police never even respond. Typically, what happens, though, is someone comes home, they, they forgot a checkbook. So they ran into the house, grabbed the checkbook and left, setting the alarm off, not even thinking that they need to deactivate the alarm code. And then they leave. Or they're leaving for work in the morning, or they're in a, you know, there, there's just a lot of stuff on their mind, and they end up not sharing information with the house cleaner or with other people. So it is an education process that we hope that we can reduce the number of alarms just by making people think a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I get that. Okay.
All right. Other questions for the?
I hate to belabor it, but...
Okay, go ahead.
So residential, you talk about silent alarms. Silent alarms residential?
Oh, almost exclusively. Right.
Yeah, that's just not my experience. Anyone I know who has an alarm, there's an ear-piercing alarm that goes off when the alarm is set off, ear piercing. So you're saying that that's not the standard?
That's not the standard. That's correct.
That's interesting, because the ear-piercing alarm, when, when, when an intruder comes into the house, is the first indication that the intruder should leave because an alarm's been triggered.
Right. Yeah.
So I'm disputing that. I just have to dispute it. I, I'd like to, I'd like to know what your statistics are on that, because I've, I don't know a single person, and I know lots of people who have alarms, who have one that's silent. They want to know when someone's in their house, especially in the middle of the night. They don't want a silent alarm.
Well, you have options of setting different ways to do that. I'm just saying that as a matter of police responses, most of the times, our preference would be silent, because we have a better opportunity to catch them. Businesses, when they are audible, you know, someone breaks a front window and the alarm goes off, you're right, it's a deterrent, and it deters people from entering because that, that siren, that horn that is going off, actually notifies everybody in the neighborhood, something has happened there.
Yeah, because I, you know, if I'm in bed and my whole family's asleep and someone breaks into my home, I don't want there to be no noise when someone comes in.
Absolutely, I concur. But that's not typically what we respond to. We don't respond to those people sleeping. We respond to people who are not in the dwelling, and the alarm company gets an alarm and the house is vacant.
Okay, well, I guess, most people who have alarms, though, they don't set it to silent when they're not home, and, or do they set it to silent when they're not home? And, and to ear-piercing siren when they are home?
Yeah, I don't know. That's something we could certainly, I don't have that answer. I don't know how they set it typically.
Okay.
It might help to, I don't know if we are ready to make any kind of action on this ordinance at this time. Is there any suggestion about changing either wording or continuing this discussion in another meeting?
Chair Roberts?
Yes, go ahead, Carol Ammons.
I think it needs to actually be continued to another committee of the whole for two reasons. One, at, at the present moment, I have a concern about a registration fee and then a annual renewal fee. Why does the person who registers their alarm, has not moved, have to then pay a $25 renewal fee? I also have a concern about a person having to pay $200 for not filing this registration within 14 days of getting an alarm system. I, I just think it's too punitive for us to move on it. It really needs to have a little more, a period of time where there's some volunteer enrollment program that the citizens and the business people can participate in with some minor fee, but a full-scale fee that is presented tonight. If it's, if it's moved at this point, I would have to vote no. And then the language in here, there's some language that suggests that there's a way to not be charged the fee, depending on the circumstances and the review of the chief, and in some cases, maybe you'll be charged the fee. I think that's too unclear to me as to how that would be done equitably. And so I think at this present moment, the best thing to do is for us to continue to work on this and look at other, if there are other cities who have a volunteer registration program to help reduce the amount of false alarms, that we could look at as some alternatives to this current proposal for fee schedules.
Does that mean?
So I guess I'll make a motion to...
Thank you.
Move item, move ordinance number 2014-12-112 to the next committee of the whole and ask staff to look for other examples of, in other cities, of alarm registration programs that may have a little bit more of a voluntary aspect to them than what we've been presented tonight. And that's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. It's been seconded by Mike Madigan. Discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I think the biggest gain to, 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 the biggest thing to accomplish is to reduce the false alarm. That's the best thing that can happen for the city, it gives the police more time to do it, they need to be doing, instead of responding to false alarms. So I think the goal is great. I think the fines for when you get false alarms is fine. I'm not completely opposed to registration, but I hate to see a registration fee of 50 or $25 every year going to support the collection of the registration fee. If it's, you know, if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. But it seems like we could be more efficient about it and maybe have a, a lower fee. So I, I'm in favor of the online portal sort of thing, or any kind of efficiencies we could do. But I think that's, that is kind of high for me for, for an ongoing annual fee.
Other discussion? Eric?
I may be a minority of one. I, I thought that this was actually a pretty good job, given the constraints and given the conflicting interests and that, that, this whole function of, of law enforcement and responding to alarms. But I guess I would urge, obviously, this isn't going to pass tonight. Obviously, the motion to defer it will pass. I think that's obvious. But, but I would really urge those folks who really, who want to change this, to submit those changes in writing, so that there's, so that the police department has a, a kind of a, a fixed target to work towards in terms of crafting an ordinance that, that would, at the end of the day, pass, pass the council. Because I think that the intent of the ordinance, to minimize, you know, use of, of, use of police force in, in chasing false alarms, is, is, is very worthy in that we should, you know, we can tinker with this and craft it so that the balance is, is just right by our lights. But I think we ought to, you know, we ought to work towards getting there.
All right. I'm thinking that we should take about Diane Marlin.
I would just say, I pretty much agree with what Eric just said, and my only concern was the size of the registration fee. And if, if the goal is to get people to register their alarms, I, I think it should be lower. I don't think an all voluntary approach is going to work. People don't generally do things unless they have to do things. And in this case, I think it's important to get these things registered so we know who to contact. So, so I'd be interested in looking at a somewhat lower registration fee. But otherwise, I think it, it seems like a reasonable approach to try and see how it works, and if we need to tweak it after a year, then we can do that.
Could I clarify something that, that Councilwoman Ammons said about the $200 fee is, if someone doesn't have their, if they're not registered and they get a false alarm, they'll get a notification letter saying they have 14 days to register or pay the $200 fee for not having a registered alarm. So they do have an option at that point. They don't just have to pay the $200. I just, I think, at least the way I understood what she had said, that, that wasn't exactly clear.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, the council did ask departments to figure out better ways to do things. So I think the police department has done a lot of research on this, and I, I don't think the council has to absorb it all at once, but I think we should, you know, as I said, as Eric said, if people have concerns about it, put it in writing, and we'll talk about it. But I want to thank you for all the research that you did. I think it has been well thought out, and I think we're pretty much in line with Champaign. And so anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And so now we'll take a vote. Oh, all right, Mike Madigan?
So I, I know I was, I know I made some critical comments. I know I made a lot of, asked a lot of questions. Please want you to understand that I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. I think my, my only issue is with whether or not folks ought to have to register at all. You know, there, I think there are other ways to approach this, and I'll, I'll try to share my thoughts. I, I think the, I think the portal goes beyond what we're just talking about with the police here. I think it ought to be a city thing to help, to help businesses interact with the city on a, on a cleaner basis, on a more, a more efficient basis. But I'm just not so sure registration needs to be a part of this whole thing. I think it could be more about education, more about, hey, reaching out to the alarm companies. They can send an email to their, to their customers, saying, look, here's the deal. Here's what Urbana's going to do. And get on the program, or you're going to start getting fined because you're costing the city money. I mean, I think that's, that's frankly a cleaner way to do this, as opposed to getting into this bureaucracy of registration fees and everybody keeping up with their registration over the, over time. But if you start getting... time. But if you start getting called out and they've been put on notice by the company that employs their service, well, then they're put on notice. And maybe that's another way to get at this without having to create another bureaucracy. So that's all I'm getting to. I'm not trying to poo-poo what you're doing. I'm, I see what you're trying to do here, and it makes sense. If you can knock down 6% of your calls to 2% or 3%, that's a big deal, and I'm for it.
All right, well, let's, let's take the vote. Those in favor of continuing this discussion at the next city committee of the whole indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, and opposed? Okay, well, we'll see that again on another agenda. Thank you very much. All right, we have a couple of items having to do with the fiscal year coming up, and we have ordinance 2014-12-113, 114, and 115. The first one is for levying taxes for the fiscal year of 2014. The second one is directing the county clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate fund for the next year, for July 2014 to June 2015. And the last one is ordinance directing the Champagne County clerk to abate the portion of the 2014 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, and general obligation bonds. Our financial director is here. Elizabeth, would you like to comment on these individually or together?
Together, I think. It's all a package.
Thank you, then.
So, as, as you know, we have three ordinances here which are all part of the package of levying taxes for the 2014 tax levy. Two weeks ago, you adopted the estimated tax levy, which established the maximum that we would levy, and so this ordinance now would levy that amount, $7,46,247. Based on our estimate of equalized assessed valuation, we expect that we will achieve a tax rate of $1.35. And that, that could vary a bit because the estimated equalized assessed valuation isn't locked in at this point. That could change slightly. If that happens, one of those abatements will adjust the rate. There are three primary purposes for which we levy taxes. The first is for police and fire pensions. And as we discussed in November, we are recommending a levy of $1,487,712 for police pension and $1,026,976 for fire pension. Those are based on funding 100% of the current unfunded liability by 2033, which exceeds the state's requirement for funding those pensions. We would also levy taxes for the library, and we have recommended a levy of $2,918,924, which is the same as the current tax levy. Given that our assessments are decreasing, that would actually result in a slightly higher tax rate for the library. And then remaining revenue generated by the tax levy would be allocated to the general fund, and we expect to receive about $1.5 million in the general fund. That's, that's what you're looking at tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that's a quick overview.
Are there questions then for Elizabeth? Yes, Eric?
So my question actually would be more for the library director than for Elizabeth, but I came into this meeting, and I have the following question. If we assume that the library staff get percentage raises, you know, retroactive and equivalent to our other city employees, are we going to be faced when we, when we actually do the budget for the coming year? Are we going to be, or are we even going to be faced this budget year with, or with a choice of cutting services or raising what we allot within our budget to the library? In other words, are you, are we drifting into that, that difficult area, or will we be okay with this? Or at least will we be free of that difficult choice with this levy?
And we have Celeste Cho, the director of the library, here to answer that question.
So the library board won't be looking at final numbers of what we think we can do within the current budget that has been voted in for this year until January. We're looking at health insurance choices that staff are making, for example, this month. So we don't have all the data we need to make a final decision for the board to start doing that until January, and in part, based on the decisions made here tonight. We're looking at all our options to raise revenue as appropriate, as well as to cut expenses. But it's, it's a tight budget right now with the impact we felt earlier this year as well.
So, okay, so the answer is, we don't know. But the, let me, let me, let's see if I can, oh, well, let me just ask then, Elizabeth, we don't really have until January to put this off, do we? We have to do it pretty quick.
Right. Legally, we have to adopt and file the tax levy with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December. So no, you don't have until January.
Okay. So, okay, then I guess that, I guess I will vote for this as it is, and then we'll, but keep us, I guess, I'm glad you're here tonight, and please keep us posted or through, directly or through Bill. But I'm sorry, I probably jumped into your turf, Bill. I'm sorry, I apologize about what's, what's coming down the road.
I recognize. Bill?
Yeah, actually, I was going to reiterate my suggestion last time to, to adjust the amount levied a little bit. I think the library board understands that whatever we give them is what they have to work with, and I think we need to realize that if we pass this $2,918, it'd be the same as what they received last year, but it would actually be lower than what we'd approved since 2008. Every year since then, we've approved a higher levy than that. And I have the numbers here if you want to look at it. Last year, it was abated to, to this amount, but we had approved $3,66,000 last year. So there were, they had to make some special adjustments last spring to make up for that. If they give the raises this year, the back raises will cost $67,000 to bring it up to, to go through the end of this fiscal year. And then if they give the raises July of 2015, that would add $125,000 to that year. So I'm, I'm suggesting to change, and I'll put this in, I guess, has this, has, there hasn't been a motion yet?
Not yet.
Okay, when, after it's moved, I'll make an amendment to change it by $50,000. It's, it's, it wouldn't be enough to cover the raises, but I think that would, that would at least give them a little bit more to work with, because I think we just need to realize that we can't, we can't predict what the library board's going to do with their budget. But I think we all appreciate all the outreach that the library does, all the programming they do, and the teen open labs and everything that's very popular. And I think we also recognize that it's, it's, it's time for the library staff to have a raise, if our staff has a raise. So I would, that's my suggestion. So it'd be a $50,000 change, and then we'd have to adjust, I guess, each wage amount by a prorated amount, if you could come back next week with that, when we get to that part, if it passes.
The second Tuesday of December is tomorrow?
No, we have to file the levy by the last Tuesday in December.
Last Tuesday.
Right. So we're, we're actually going to ask you to adopt the levy next Tuesday, and then we'll have the city clerk file it.
Yeah, that's next Monday.
Right, Monday. I'm still on champagne time.
You're forgiven. All right, that's interesting discussions. We probably should what, do these individually. Let's talk about twenty individually then. Does anybody want to make a motion for ordinance 2014-113?
So moved.
Okay, Bill Brown and Diane Marlin seconded it. And this is ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning Jan, July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Conversation. Bill Brown?
Okay, so I proposed an amendment to reduce general corporate fund levy by $50,000. So I'd make it $1,562,635. Increase the bottom line of the library by $50,000. So I'd make it $2,968,924. And when it comes back next week, prorate the appropriate amounts among the wages. Would that be the way to do it?
I can make that work for you.
Okay, so that's my amendment. If there's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, the amendment, Bill Brown is seconded by Eric Jacobson. Discussion on the amendment?
Question?
Yes, Carol Ammons?
Can Ms. Hannah discuss the impact of removing that amount from the general fund in the long term, since the city is in a financial crunch, what the impact of that will be, i.e. on infrastructure repairs, things that we've been talking about for the last several months not being able to get done? And this levy is being proposed so that we would have a certain fund balance in the general fund. So I'm interested in her analysis of, of the impact of that on our general fund.
Well, clearly, we would have $50,000 less revenue in the general fund, but as far as specifically what it will be that would not be funded, that's something that we determine in the budget process. The revenue from this tax levy is actually going to be received starting in about May, and it will all be received in calendar year 2015. So for the most part, it's going to affect next year's budget more than this year's budget.
And does that answer your question then, Carol?
Well, I, it actually, it actually doesn't. And the city council is going to be faced with a really difficult time in the next budget cycle because we have additional costs that we've not discussed, i.e. the 911 cost that if we can't get something moved at the state level, we'll have a $127,000 impact on the city for 911 MetCAD services. And so we have a few very big pieces that are hanging out in the wind with no actual funding mechanism at this point that will largely, I mean greatly, impact the general fund. And so I don't know if I could support that move at this point with major infrastructure approvals that need to be done, which we get complaints often in our inner cities that don't get repaired in a timely manner. Facilities and service has to move repairs back on our streets. These are, these are major concerns. 911 funding, we don't have, and we've already pushed that funding out. And so I would raise a caution and concern with this amendment.
All right, other discussion. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I appreciate that concern. I'd just point out that the, the tax levy amount from the city this year, the 1.6 million or 1.56 million, if the amendment passes, is still about $500,000 more, $600,000 more than we collected for the general fund last year. It was less than a million last year. So the city does have other, and that's because of the adjustments to the pension. The city does also have other revenue sources, like sales taxes and other things we've collected. I think we're collecting $2 or $3 million more than we were five million, five years ago. And we also have more expenses. So I, you know, it's worth considering, but I think looking at, on the balance, how the library has been flat for the past five years and decreased last year, and with increase in labor costs, I think it's appropriate to make this relatively small adjustment.
All right, Eric Jacobson?
So I guess the other thing I would point out in support of this amendment is that the, the city has reserves that the library doesn't have. So we, we, now, I don't, I'm not in favor of, of digging deeply into those reserves, but I believe that this, based on what I remember from the last time I looked, I think this is, I think this $50,000 is going to change our reserve balance. If, if we don't make any cuts in response to the $50,000, then the reserve balance, I believe, will go down by about 0.1%. So I think that, I, I think that this is, I think this is prudent, given the relative financial situation of the city and the, and the library, and the importance of the, importance of the library and the, the recent funding history of the library.
Mayor Pressing?
I would like to point out, Carol mentioned that we were $127,000 behind on MetCAD. That was for this current year, so by next year, we're going to be over $250,000 behind. I, I hope we will get the state law changed, but we also have not settled with the Fraternal Order of Police, so we have a lot of expenses. The reason I had proposed that we hold the library at the current levy and then decide after they work on their budget how much of a subsidy we want to give from the general fund, is that we don't know what the library actually needs at this point, and we also don't know what their reserves are at this point. I believe Elizabeth is still trying to figure that out, or have you figured it out?
I think we have a pretty close idea of what the fund balance is in the library.
For the library?
Yeah.
What, what would that be?
It's about $1.3 million. And the way the library's funding comes in is we get the big property tax influx in September and then June, but June is the last month of the fiscal year. So 45, 46% of the income for the entire year comes in, in the last month of the fiscal year. So we use the fund balance the whole year to get, to make it to the last month when that money comes in. So it's not fund balance that's sitting separate. It is what gets us through the year. And we are very appreciative of the mayor's offer to keep the dollar amount flat as opposed to being lessened by the EAV impact, but any extra above that would make a significant difference. We're looking at, again, all the different places to increase income and lower expenses, but it's to parallel the wage increases, as has been the case since at least 2003, looking at old minutes. It's going to be very tough for us to do that this year, but we will make it work.
What is the balance in the general fund?
In the city's general fund?
Yeah.
After this budget amendment tonight, it'll be just a little shy of $4 million.
Yeah. So the library has about $1 million, and the city general fund has about $4 million. So we have a relative, you're totally, well, you're not totally dependent on property taxes because the city does pay the IMRF and Social Security. So I'm saying relatively, the fund balance for the library is bigger than that for the city. Is that correct? For the, for the general fund?
Well, our, our fund balance will be right around 11%. Our estimated fund balance at the end of the current fiscal year, 11% of expenditures. I'm not sure, Celeste, what your percentage?
Well, our total budget's about $3.3 million.
So yours is about 33%?
Close to that, yes. Yeah. But like I said, we need that to get to the end of the year for the next influx.
Right, but we, we also can loan you money and things like that. So anyway, just to put it in perspective, there are a lot of unknowns. I think you could do the 50,000, but on the other hand, we could wait and see how much the general fund would want to contribute to the libraries, whether you want to set it in the property tax levy or you want to deal with it later.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Carol?
Just one question for finance.
Okay, Carol.
Well, this is actually not a request of the library, which makes it a little difficult because we don't know what the library actually has as a need and a proposal to get that done, and we won't know that until after January. We could come back and the council could do a budget amendment once the library actually lays out its budget and its proposal and its needs, once they are completed with what they are looking to do. Is that correct?
Yes, we could allocate additional revenue to the library outside of Yes, we could allocate additional revenue to the library outside of the property tax levy.
Okay. That's what I would hope the council members in this case would consider, because we have the, the unknowns that still sit out there, not only for the city but also for the library, that there needs to be, I think, some consideration for outstanding expenses that we currently have in the city as well as those that are unfunded currently, and that we also look at actual proposal from the library director, once they get their, their actual budget in order, where they're going to look at increased revenues on the library side so that we can fund them appropriately because maybe what's being put into this levy is not even an appropriate level. So I think it, I think it's a little premature to, to request putting this in the levy for tonight.
Okay, we have what? Bill, do you want to make one more comment or are we going to have a vote here?
Yeah, just as a response. I guess the idea is to, is to try to rationalize the expenses of the library to match what, what we're, what we're taxing in the levy. Rather, I think we talked before about trying to, trying to understand better what we're spending on the library, and this is one way to do it, to make sure that what we levy is what they have to work with in their budget, and then you don't have a lot of back and forth. It just seems a little cleaner to do it that way rather than to wait and then, you know, yeah, maybe we'll, maybe we'll offer even more, you think, to, to pay the raises? I don't think so. I think once we set the levy, we'll have what we have to work with and they'll have what they have to work with because I just don't think it would happen later. So I'd still encourage you to vote yes on the amendment.
Okay, Eric.
Well, there's just one procedural issue, which is if we do a budget amendment later, that'll require a supermajority, whatever we do tonight is a majority. So often, we are doing things by consensus, but sometimes if we have differences of opinion, that makes a difference.
All right, Mayor Pressing.
If we adopt the budget, that's by a simple majority. It's amending the budget, that's a supermajority.
Right. Okay. And I've got one question. So Mike, do you want to take it over again?
I will assume the chair.
Okay, I have a question.
Paul Derman, Roberts.
All right. Celeste, can you tell me how the Library Foundation interacts and affects the city, the library budget? And one reason why I want to bring this up is that during the last year, I believe the, the foundation purchased a building. And if the library has the funds to purchase a building, how does that fit into the needs of the library in the long run?
The Library Foundation purchased the Weber property for future expansion for the library and hopefully to be an income generator. At the moment, we are not breaking even on that property, although part of the property involved a parking lot, so the library is no longer renting parking spaces but is able to provide parking to staff within the context of the, we pay interest on the mortgage that the foundation took out to purchase the land. So instead of paying a larger amount, the library's paying a smaller amount on the interest and is getting parking for staff at less expense. So the foundation is a completely separate institution and purchased this and gave it to the library as a gift. They work mostly with capital campaign types of donations. They raised money for the expansion of the library, of course. So this is potentially, that could either be sold in the future, and the library board has expressed interest if, if someone wanted to develop the space and wanted to offer a fair market, market price for it, that we, they would be happy to entertain those conversations. If there was further expansion, staging could be done in the spot, or the, the space could be used as office space for staff when they need to relocate. So it was looking for future expansion as capital expenses. That's how the foundation has focused.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We vote on the amendment. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
So three and three.
Maybe we need to have a roll call.
Yeah, all right. All right, do the roll call then, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Ammons?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
You know, and I'm going to say no.
So it fails.
All right, thanks though. And now let's go back to the original tax levy, which was, without the amendment. Those, if we're ready for that conversation, that vote, those indicate?
I do have a question.
Okay, question, Mike Madigan.
So, so what is the tax rate then under this proposed levy as compared to last year?
We will make sure by abating the levy that we end up with a rate of 135.5, which would be exactly the same as last year.
So the same rate and the same levy. How does that happen?
Well, actually, it'll be the same rate and a slightly lower levy because our assessments are decreasing by something like 1.7 percent.
So what the mayor has proposed here is the same rate and a lower levy.
Yes.
So I'm pleased to say that I support the mayor.
These things can happen.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so having no more comments, we'll take the vote. Those in favor of the tax levy as proposed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. It's toward the city council for approval at the next meeting. All right, let's go to the next ordinance, which is the ordinance 2014-12-114, an ordinance directing the Champaign County City Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate fund for the year beginning July 1st, 2014 and ending June 30th, 2015. Any more comments on that? Any proposals? Yes, Diane Marlin.
I move that we send ordinance number 2014-12-114 to counsel with a recommendation for approval.
Second. All right, Diane Marlin, and then Mike Madigan. Any discussion on this? Okay, those in, okay, there is a discussion. Bill Brown?
Just a comment that it says general corporate fund levy, so if we do, if the abatement does reduce the amount, it shouldn't come out of the library fund like it did last time.
Yes, that was the intent, since we decided to levy a specific dollar amount for the library, that, that it would remain at that dollar amount, and the abatement would reduce the general fund revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, that goes towards city council for further action. Ordinance number 2014-12-115, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2014 tax levy related to the General Obligation Bond Series 2012 and the General Obligation Bond Series 2014. Is there a motion?
I'll move adoption of that.
Okay. Eric Jacobson? Bill Brown, seconded. Other discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that is going to be forwarded to city council. Thanks so much. I don't know if we're done with that completely. Oh, yeah, we have one more item. Ordinance number 2014-12-116, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2014 to 2015, and this has to do with wage increases for IAAF employees.
This is a very simple and straightforward budget amendment as compared to the last one you saw. This basically amends several line items in the fire department budget to implement the contract that you approved last week.
The fire department contract. All right, any comments on this or questions for the finance department? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, Carol Ammons makes a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Diane Marlin. Any discussion? All right, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that forwards to city council with approval. All right, we have a couple items from Public Works coming up, and Craig Schonkweiler?
These are, I'll just read them. This all has to do with Airport Road, so we have Resolution 2014-12-006-R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local agency economic TARP agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation concerning Airport Road to Willa Road to Cunningham Boulevard. Also, a resolution 2014-12-067-R, a resolution establishing a Class II or Class III designated truck route on Airport Road to Willa Road to Cunningham Avenue. And ordinance 2014-12-117, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year 2014-15 concerning the Airport Road, Willa Road to Cunningham Avenue Route, US Route 45. All right, what can you tell us about these items?
Well, back in, back in June, we entered into an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation to get some what we call EDP, which is Economic Development Program Funds. Since that time, we're about 60 percent finished with the design our consultant is. They're tracking on, on schedule for a bid letting here this winter to rebuild this road next year. In September, the Department of Transportation announced that they would take applications for truck access route funds. So as staff, we felt that this was a good chance to basically be able to get some additional funding for this project with really little to no change to the project. So we applied for the funding and then we received notice from IDOT that we would, we were selected to receive the funding, which is about $83,000. What, what we do here is basically we've got two resolutions. One would be a resolution entering into this agreement, which would replace the previous agreement, which would now, we would still get the Economic Development Program Funds, but now we would also have the truck access route funds. And then there's another resolution where we would designate Airport Road a Class III truck route, and then we would have a budget amendment ordinance, which would allow for us to receive that, that money and then add it to the expense side should we need it. Any questions?
Can you explain how the trucks would use this road? What's, what's, I mean, it's a truck route, and the destinations are?
The primary destination is Frasca.
Frasca.
And the way that IDOT has their, it's a gradation system, it's a class system where it goes from one, which is pretty much the interstates, to two, to which is a similar type of facility, a divided highway such as 45 Cunningham down north of the interstate. And then three is really more of a local road. And when we design the pavements for our local roads, we design those for 80,000 pound vehicles regardless, so we're already meeting that criteria. And then really, this, the Class III, the deal is it's, restricts the length of the vehicle. So if we were to go, say, a Class I or II, then we'd have to have a significantly wider intersection. The current intersection is designed for basically a Class III, truck route anyway. When we get done here, if the resolution is passed, as part of this project, we would designate that, that route, that road as a truck route that would show up in the IDOT system. It would also, there would be signage that would say Class III Truck Route. And then, but basically, the trucks are primarily the trucks that go to Frasca, which are not regularly frequent, but, you know, periodically going through there to drop off, you know, pick up the simulators and take those all, really all over the country.
And we've gotten approval for this?
We have, we, all we have to do is basically go through the ordinances, yes.
Any questions? Yes, Diane.
Well, I'd move that we consider items 10, 11, 12 in omnibus fashion.
Second. All right, it's been motioned and seconded for, to do these together as omnibus fashion. So we need to have, I can't remember if it's a roll call for that item or is it just a, so I guess, first, we're going to have a discussion?
We need to vote on the omnibus.
Yes, we do. That's what I was going to ask, that this is going to be, okay, so let's, to do this in omnibus fashion, if the clerk would call the roll, we'll find out if we can do this or not.
Actually, you can do that without a roll call, just a voice vote. We'll give it an omnibus.
All right, then let's have a voice vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, fine.
Then I would then move Resolution 2014-12-066-R, 067-R, and 24-12-117 to counsel with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, Carol Ammons, no, not Carol Ammons, Diane Marlin, and Mike Madigan, seconded. Any discussion on this?
Seeing none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. We go, this, this will go to the city council with approval. Thank you.
All right, item 13, ordinance number 2014-12-118, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class BB liquor licenses for Hot Spot Restaurant LLC, 1809 South Phila Road. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Michael Madigan.
As a liquor license holder, in the city of Urbana, state law precludes me from participating in this agenda item, so I shall recuse myself.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Mayor Pressing, this is your item.
Yeah, this is a successful business, but we found that it had the wrong classification, so we would like to change it to a BB licensed beer and, I think it's beer and wine.
Okay, so beer and wine, sale of beer and wine. All right, any questions about this change of license? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move approval of this ordinance.
Eric Jacobson? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Diane Marlin spoke first, thank you though. Any other discussion about the liquor license? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? None, okay. That would be placed on the next city council agenda. And I invite Mike Madigan to come back to the city council. Now we're going to go to item 14 on the agenda, Resolution 2014-12-068-R, a resolution authorizing a cable franchise agreement between the city of Urbana and ITV3 Incorporated. Yes, Jim?
As you all know, ITV3 entered into an agreement with UC2B Not-for-Profit a little while ago for the build-out maintenance operation, and hopefully there will be none but repair of the UC2B fiber optic system. They have now come back and have asked both the city of Champaign and the city of Urbana to enter into a separate agreement for a cable franchise agreement. Under the Illinois Competitive Equities portion of the municipal code, the agreement that they must seek is one which will place them neither at a competitive, a significant competitive advantage or disadvantage to the current cable franchisee Comcast. Illinois law and statutes, or I should say case law around the country do not mandate that the agreements be identical word for word, but substantially in a same competitive relationship. The agreement that was negotiated by the city of Champaign, their city attorney and myself, and ITV3 substantially mirrors and in most respects parrots exactly the language of the Comcast agreement. I believe I submitted information last Friday to you all, and I apologize for not getting it out too sooner. I was out of the office Wednesday and Thursday. The primary differences, with one exception, actually are slightly, but not significantly, more, a little more onerous on ITV3. The one provision regarding the build-out provision in the Comcast agreement The one provision regarding the build-out provision in the Comcast agreement and the ITV3 agreement, they're slightly different. Comcast has, I will disclose, has contacted me indicating that they may want changes in their agreement. I don't know what those changes are, and when I asked the individual who commented, or who made that comment to me, he said he didn't know what changes they might be seeking to their agreement. But obviously, we will hash those out if they are viable. We are not required to use the language in the existing Comcast agreement word for word. So we'll see what they want. The, this agreement that is in your packet, actually, I sent a yet more revised agreement, what hopefully is the final agreement this evening before the council meeting. Some of you were out and were not able to receive it. It just made some, you know, typo changes and that's really about it. This is, this agreement has already been approved by Champaign and has been duly executed by ITV3. And what I'm asking you to do is forward the same agreement on to council for next week. Before you consider it next week and prior to the start of the council meeting next week, you are required to hold a public hearing at which anyone can come and speak as to the viability of, you know, awarding yet another franchise and allowing yet another entity to use the public right-of-ways. They are, to my understanding, what's called a CILIC, which means they automatically have a right to the public right-of-ways. They do pay local telephone franchise taxes to the state, so they do have the right, to my understanding, they will use the fiber optic system they're installing to carry their cable signal. Levi Denkla, I think that's how you pronounce his last name, will be here next week for any and all questions that you might have regarding this proposal. Several of you have raised questions in terms of the revenue impact on the city because of this, and I would suggest that the revenue impact is neutral. Because to the extent ITV3 is able to sign up cable subscribers, I suspect unless they penetrate the market more than Comcast, they would be taking away Comcast subscribers and/or AT&amp;T subscribers. To the extent they penetrate a market which has yet to be tapped, then there would probably be somewhat of a revenue increase. However, if the adoption or your approval of this franchise creates a more competitive environment within the city, then there's a chance that the revenue could go slightly down because cable rates will go down and the bulk of the fees, the 5% fee, is based on gross revenue. And there's a, in the agreement, there's a list of what constitutes gross revenue. So no one can say with certainty, because we don't know how ITV3 will penetrate the market, what they'll draw from Comcast, and whether there will in fact be a reduction in overall cable rates to the residents of Urbana by reason of another competitor in the market.
Thanks for that summary. Other questions for, for our attorney, Jim, or I mean, not Jim, Eric?
So it seems to me that while we can't predict the effect on our revenue, that the effect on our community is guaranteed to be either neutral or good. So I, if, if our revenue goes down because our, our citizens get better rates, we could take that and, you know, figure out how to deal with that another way. So, so this sounds, so I guess I'm, I'm in favor of it.
And Bill Brown?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, of executing a franchise agreement. I just, I'm not sure if there's anything we could change, we should change. And I'm a little disappointed that this didn't go to the Cable Commission and so that we would have a recommendation or have some expertise weigh in on, on the changes between this and, and what the Comcast franchise agreement is. They, they would probably know better, you know, what the differences are and if there was something we should be going for that we aren't. I did have a couple, one specific question, I guess, in the peg capacity. It mentions, this is on page 15, section 10, top of the page. It talks about four channels and says the city of Champaign programs one of four channels and this channel is made available in city of Urbana at no charge to grantee. Doesn't say anything about our channel being made available in the city of Champaign, so I just kinda wonder why that's in there and it's not, and the reverse isn't. So, and then I guess another question, just with this fifth channel being kind of a two-way channel, is the way I interpret it, again, you know, I'm not an expert, so I don't know.
Well, let me try to answer your three questions.
Great.
In terms of the Cable Commission, at this point in the history of cable television operation, it is pretty much controlled by state law and federal law. It's my understanding, back in the days when the Cable Commission was created, it was a little more, shall we say, Wild West kind of thing. This agreement probably can't be changed because if we change it, regardless of what the Cable Commission recommends, then we will run into far more questionable problems with Comcast and AT&amp;T. This agreement is a mirror, which gets to the second question, a mirror of the Champaign Agreement. It's identical, except it has our name in it instead of their name, and they've agreed to carry our station. So we can't compel Champaign to carry our station, but they've agreed to carry our station, our, our peg station. In terms of the fifth station, this, that is language that is identical to the Comcast agreement, and that's why it's included there. We can't relieve them of providing, ITV of providing a fifth station, or frankly, require them to provide a fifth, sixth, and seventh station, because in that, given the cost of doing that, that would have a significant impact on the competitive equities between Comcast and ITV3.
Does that satisfy your concerns?
Okay, I, I think so. From what I understand, the fifth station is supposed to provide a return path. And then we have this origination points that specify Urbana City Building, School District, U of I. But with the fifth, fifth channel with the return path, wouldn't that do the same thing as have an origination?
That I can't answer. I, I don't know what the reference to return path means. That was obviously something that was negotiated in 2010, I believe, when the Comcast agreement was renewed, or even much before that, when the original, I believe it was a 10, original 10-year franchise was negotiated, that language may have been carried over. But it is, that language in that section is identical to the Comcast and now identical to the Champaign Agreement with ITV3, as well as their Comcast Agreement.
Okay, thanks.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Carol Eamons.
I'm interested in knowing, how long does, I don't have the advantage of having the franchise agreement in front of me, so how long is this franchise agreement being written for? And does it run concurrently with the franchise agreement that is with Comcast currently? That's my first question.
I believe it's a 10-year agreement. It would be effective upon approval of the council and execution of the mayor. And it is not, it does not run concurrent in terms of term. I believe the Comcast Agreement is a 10-year agreement. This is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to go back and look at it, a 10-year agreement. And so this one would start whenever the mayor executes it and Comcast is up and running. So they are not in lockstep or in phase with one another.
And what's the, I'm sorry, what's the benefit to the city of Urbana in, to enter into this franchise agreement? And have we looked, I think some cities do actually get a greater benefit from their franchise agreements than we currently get. And I've sent an email, unfortunately, I don't have the documents, so I can't share them so that I can figure out what some of the negotiation points are. But other cities, communities benefit from these agreements and they're not shaped by the Comcast or the, the big corporations shaping these franchise agreements, and the cities don't benefit from them. What's the benefit for the city of Urbana?
I, I'm not quite sure I understand your, your question, but let me see and give it a try. Actually, I think it's a two-part question. One, I think you have asked the question, why do other cities benefit maybe a little bit more from their cable agreements? The answer to that is when the original, presumably when the first agreement was written, after the Competitive Equity Statute went into effect, whoever negotiated their agreement may have done a better job than whoever negotiated the agreements here in Champaign-Urbana. But I'm not sure in fact that is the case. The statute sets the rate, the highest rate, which I believe is 5% for the fee, and then a 2% peg fee. Now, Champaign has a, you know, with their Comcast arrangement, has a bit of a difference in their peg fee arrangement, as I understand it. They were paid an upfront fee, as it was explained by city attorney Stevens, of 200 and, or 200 and some thousand dollars, and then their peg fee is 1 and 1/2%. Urbana, whoever negotiated, did not ask for that upfront payment, but the peg fee is 2% over the life of the agreement. And the cap on peg fee, I believe, is 2%. The cap fee on the general fee is 5%. We are at that fee. In terms of how does this benefit Urbana, if you mean how does it benefit the city? It provides hopefully a greater competitive model, which, with the goal of driving down a little bit cable rates, whether in fact that occurs, we, we can't control that. But another player in the marketplace, where there are maybe two players in the marketplace, by adding a third one, there should be a competitive advantage. It also can dovetail into the internet service that ITV3 is, will be, and is offering through the UC2B system. It's my understanding that they, like Comcast, will be offering, you know, single play, double play, triple play. I don't know if those are registered trademarks of anybody, but it would be internet, telephone, and cable video. They also apparently have access to and a sizable video library that small cable operators normally do not have access to, because it's my, again, it's my understanding that access to that kind of programming can get expensive. ITV can support that.
If I can just make a closing comment on that?
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Brown that this agreement really, I would feel better if this agreement had come before a Cable Commission for their input. Is there a timeframe, I guess I'll ask, for us to, to send this forward? Is there any pressure, any end of the year, any deadlines, any real ones, not, not just imaginary, really deadlines on this?
There are no deadlines, except for ITV would like to, as they say, get to work on this. There were expressions, or the Cable Commission has seen this agreement, not the Urbana one per se, but they have provided commentary to Champaign regarding their agreement and their commentary principally by the chairman, who happens to have a conflict of interest with ITV3. So I'm not quite sure what input the Cable Commission can provide on an agreement that can't be changed.
All right, Eric. So Eric Jacobson?
In, in terms of benefits to our community, it isn't only competition for price, it's improvement in service, because we do expect this to be significantly faster and hopefully other providers will figure out a way to compete for quality of service also. So I'm, I'm persuaded that, that the, and I guess the other thing I would say is that unlike Comcast and AT&amp;T, ITV3 is an Illinois corporation. They're, they're, they're homegrown, they're our, our, our folks. So I, I am persuaded that this is, that this is a good deal.
Any other questions? Mayor Pressing?
I would just like to say that I've certainly gotten a lot more communication from my, from these other providers than they ever felt like doing before, now that we have ITV3 in town. So I think competition is a very good thing.
If I can?
Yes, Carol?
I think, I think we're not talking about competition nor of their profits, and I'm a customer of ITV3, which I argue that my internet is not faster, it's actually slower, and I really need to call them, I just haven't. But what I'm speaking to is a cable franchise agreement that I'm concerned that, A, you put before the council a franchise agreement that we really have no input on, and then tell us to approve it without us actually being able to weigh in on the larger impact of a 10-year franchise agreement, whether it's with ITV3, Comcast, AT&amp;T, or any other corporation, that is supposedly the benefactor is the resident, but in reality, if you talk to the majority of the residents, they don't feel 100 and something dollars for cable TV, which they can't even choose their own route, which is a national problem with the FCC needs to deal with, as far as what channels we want to purchase, have no actual input. And so I'm not exactly sure if, what, why this agreement is not changeable and why we would send it to council based on it being an Illinois company and not necessarily the language in the franchise agreement.
Okay, and, yeah.
Carol, are you asking a question about why the agreement as drafted cannot be altered? Is that a question or just a statement?
I think what you've said to us is that it can't be altered because it's the same agreement that Champaign has passed, which I don't understand that being the solution to why it can't be altered, that they've asked for it, is parallel to Comcast, when does Comcast agreement end? Perhaps we want to alter it. I, I'm not sure, the FCC does not tell us that we cannot have a franchise agreement in our city that we negotiate it with these companies. And I know that's not true.
But Illinois, Illinois state law provides that, Carol.
They don't tell us what it can be.
It, it, it may not be precise in Federal Communication Commission rules and regs, but Illinois has a Competitive Equity Statute that says if there is an existing cable provider, a new cable provider cannot, your agreement cannot give that new cable provider a greater advantage over the existing cable provider or put the new cable provider at a significant disadvantage. So it, it's a matter of a provision in the Illinois Municipal Code, and the provision is cited in the agreement, even the, the draft that went out on Friday. If you want to check the provision, it's kind of buried into a much larger section, the Competitive Equities. It's, it's down to essentially one sentence. So state law basically provides that. Now, if the city wants to open up its Comcast agreement and try to renegotiate two agreements at the same time, that, that's a policy decision. But the other thing that has to be taken into consideration insofar as why Comcast was given a 10-year agreement and why ITV, one, they get a 10-year agreement because that's what Comcast got, but two, they're, they're going to be investing significant amount of money in installing whatever it takes to transmit cable signals, whether it's part of the internet or not, or the, the fiber optic or not, and that's what Comcast has done. They've invested a significant amount of money to lay cable. So they're not looking, I don't think they would do it on a one or a two or a three-year agreement.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment. So Michael, could you take over the chair?
Harmon Roberts.
All right. Also, I'd like to say that, now, it's been, it's been probably eight years ago that I participated in fact-finding for the first franchise cable negotiation that came up to the city. One of the things that, that is unique about Urbana, and this is not even true about Champaign, is that we negotiated with Comcast or whatever carrier that we had. is that we negotiated with Comcast or whatever carrier that we had at the time, but it continues to be true today, that there is a higher level of rate support for our peg channels than any other community in the state. And it, this is a, was, rather than losing advantage in negotiating with these major cable providers, the city of Urbana was able to finesse a deal with them to support three cables, cable stations, government, education, and public sector. And even today, Champaign does not provide a public sector cable station or programming. Anybody who needs, any community group that wants to appear on public acts of television must come to Urbana to appear, because in Champaign, they are not carrying that material. And this is so unique in the state that it became known that we had done some kind of like amazing feat of negotiation to achieve this. We're not losing that in this current agreement by just adding on another carrier, provider, and I understand that we would not probably want to try to open up renegotiations at this time with Comcast. So that's it. I take back the chair.
I will reluctantly yield the chair back.
I know, power is so, that is so exciting. And this is such a.
Two weeks from now, two weeks.
Such a fruitful discussion. Okay, Bill Brown.
Okay, I guess I'm okay with having the public hearing and letting people have input then, but if we can't change it, I don't know why we're having the public hearing. But from what I understand, there are some minor differences between this and the Comcast franchise, but I'm still not clear what they are. I think one has to do with build-out requirements. Comcast was required to build out to everyone in the city. This one, you have to be within a certain distance. So if there are minor changes like that, I don't know why we're making this one easier. That's all.
If the council would like, this afternoon, and I don't know whether I included in the last transmission to you, I can provide you with a copy of this agreement with comments in the margin, insofar as how it varies from the Comcast agreement. The, what I call the build-out provision, I think that's what you were referring to, Bill, there is a difference there. But another area where there's a difference is the audit provision. We have a right to audit, a formal audit of the Comcast revenues. We don't have to go through that process to ascertain the revenue, you know, to verify that the computation of the fees that are the 5% and the 2% are paid. We have the right to ask for virtually anything and everything that we want. So in an audit, typically, you may do sampling. We don't have to do sampling, we can ask for 100% of whatever it is we're looking for. So that's a change. So they're going to, there are some slight changes. Part of it is, it relates to the UC2B not-for-profit ITV contract, because I assume they intend to run the same cable signals and telephone signals over the UC2B fiber optic system. So I can send that out if you want that.
Okay, so where do we stand, and does anybody want to make a motion?
I do.
Yes, Diana.
I move that remove resolution, or that we send Resolution Number 2014-12-068R, Resolution authorizing cable franchise agreement between the city of Urbana and ITV3 Incorporated to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, second by Eric Jacobson. Is there a discussion on this topic?
Just one.
Yes, Carol.
A follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify the public hearing requirement on this, and I think Mr. Brown just pointed out that if there's no actual way to change that, is the public hearing a requirement of moving this franchise agreement?
Yes.
And if we could receive the franchise agreement of Comcast, or if it's online, we can get a link to that, we can do a comparison of the difference there.
Carol, I'm, I didn't hear the last part, but the same statute that includes the competitive equities provision also requires a public hearing. It requires that we send notice of what they call an application for franchise, notice of ITV's application to franchise, for franchise. We have to send a notice to Comcast and a notice to AT&amp;T with the quote "application." They didn't have a formal application, they, in essence, submitted this agreement, and that has been sent out and received by Comcast and AT&amp;T, and I have evidence that that has occurred. The statute requires a public hearing at which they or anyone else can appear.
And so that public hearing has to take place before this is officially approved? Is that, is that my understanding?
Correct. You are correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, and Jim, there would be no reason why a member of the cable commission couldn't come and weigh in also during that public input period, right?
You are correct. Anybody can provide input.
Eric.
So Carol, I just would point out that the reason we can't change it, and the reason we have to have the hearing, even though we can't change it, is all because of state statutes. So in about five weeks, this will be all your fault.
There you go. All right, we've got, we've got a motion. Any, any further comments? Then we're going to take a vote. Those in favor say, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes, and it'll be on the agenda for the next committee, or the city council meeting. Our last item is Resolution 2014-12-069R, our resolution requesting the University of Illinois to open a public discussion of the impact of CARL taxation and billing practices on the local community and the university. And we had some public input on that, and Mayor Pressing.
Okay, thank you. I think we could start by what's the second to the last paragraph. It's in the long-term interest of the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign to promote healthy and sustainable local communities in order to attract students, faculty, and staff. And right now, the city of Urbana is under tremendous pressure. We have not only increasing tax rates, but we have decreasing assessed values. And I would call that quite simply a recipe for disaster. So I think there's a lot of confusion about why this happened and what the alternatives might be, and so that's the reason I have put this together, to request the university to have a public discussion. And I want the public to be able to ask questions, and then have some people research things and get answers, and maybe some solutions to this. I think there are two things going on. There's the tax break for charity care, which people don't understand that thing. But there's also the statement that, that was made by Health Alliance, that health insurance costs more in Champaign County than it does in Chicago. And that statement is very interesting, because if we have to pay higher costs, that's another drain on the community, and it's a drag on economic development. And I think it's something that needs to be talked about, because I've had employees move here from other states, and they say that health insurance costs a lot more. So it's not just what, what Health Alliance said, but it's also people talking about it. So I put together this thing to kind of outline what I think the problem areas are, but it's basically to get a public discussion going, so we can get some clarity. And I know the university is trying to get some of its cost put over onto the community. They have a rosier vision of our financial capability than I do. But I'm on the Airport Advisory Commission, and I know the recommendation is to have some kind of a way of the university shifting the cost of the airport to the cities. But we would have a real hard time doing that. And I did point out at the micro-urban transformational leadership summit that was held last week at the university, that in Rochester, Minnesota, Mayo Clinic not only pays taxes to the city, but they also run the airport. So there are other ways of doing things, and I think this community needs to have a very open public discussion about what the problems are, what some of the solutions are, and how we could go about finding them. So that's the reason I'm presenting you with this proposal.
Okay, let's open up to conversation. Are questions? Yes, Eric.
So I have a few problems with the resolution, but the major problem I have with the resolution is that the city council has not been briefed or made aware of what's been going on between the, between our administration and CARL. So I'm going to propose, I guess, I guess, properly speaking, I can't actually, I'm going to, when this gets on the floor, I'm going to propose an amendment by substitution, which will be for the council to get briefed on what is going on with respect to litigation, what's going on with respect to other interactions between CARL and the, between CARL and the city. I, and I apologize, the reason I was late for, at 7:00, was because I was procrastinated, and then I was trying to get copies of my resolution for you, and the printer jammed. So I neither had copies for you, nor did I get here on time. But, but I will, I will read it out, and it was in an email to you, but it was probably too late for you to see before the meeting.
The conversation, or questions? Yeah. Michael Madigan.
Well, I certainly have no problem with the resolution, you know, discussing, convening some folks to discuss this entire situation, as long as it's, as long as it's fair, okay? The resolution itself is a bit problematic, in my estimation. It's kind of trying to lead to a conclusion, and I think that if we're going to do something like this as a, as a city government, we ought to be inviting everyone to the table to have a fair, you know, to have a fair impact on the discussion, so. So my first question would be, would CARL be invited to defend themselves in this court?
It isn't, it isn't a court, but I certainly think they should be invited.
Okay.
I think everybody who has a stake in this should be invited, and I think the general public should be invited, and there should be opportunities for questions.
Do you see?
And I think there should be a series of discussions, because I don't think you can just do this in one hour. I think it's, it's very complicated, and everybody's got a different viewpoint on it, and I think we have to understand each other's viewpoints.
I would absolutely agree with that. This statement about health insurance being more expensive here than in Chicago, and being attributed to Health Alliance, which folks should understand is arguably the third-largest employer in the city of Urbana, with about 500 employees right across the street, in a facility that they're probably going to vacate in a couple of years, because of the animosity of the city toward CARL and Health Alliance. I believe that what we would find, and I would hope that the experts would come before this convening, the body convened by this resolution, would be that the disparity in insurance rates is largely driven by federal reimbursement, and how those reimbursement rates vary between Chicago and more rural areas such as this. So I think we ought to be very careful about how we castigate local, successful businesses who are providing a high-quality product to hundreds of thousands of lives in Illinois, including the entire city of Urbana employees. I think we should, we best be careful about that, and frankly, I invite the public discussion about why those rates vary, because I think you'll be a bit surprised about why they vary. And it has nothing to do with some kind of CARL, Health Alliance cabal, or grand conspiracy to charge us more. It has much more to do with the federal government and their reimbursement policies on Medicare and Medicaid. So while I have no problem with this, I just, I hope that the goal overall is to come to some kind of understanding and historical perspective on CARL's, CARL's traditional role as a taxpayer in this community. And like I stated earlier, and probably inappropriately to somebody who ought to be able to come in and say whatever they want to say without being confronted, for 47 years, CARL did not pay property taxes in this community. And when pressed by the taxing entities in the last 15 or so years, the issue has come to the fore. So I don't think this is a CARL problem. I think this is a problem of taxing bodies seeking pots of money that they haven't tapped before. And that's what we find ourselves in today, is a situation where we think there's a golden goose that we have not gone after. And I just think that that is a, that is an unfortunate circumstance. What we ought to be doing is looking, looking to ways to broaden the tax base, to grow the community, and to also support a preeminent employer and contributor to our local economy. But for CARL, Urbana would be a cowtown.
Eric Jacobson, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, I don't, I do have some specific concerns about the language here. I have concerns about putting the words "charity care" in quotation marks, because, in fact, I think it's pretty well documented that CARL does give charity care, and I know people who receive it. So I, the quotation marks imply that that's a fiction, and it's not a fiction. I don't believe that the proposed medical school is between the engineering college at, at the university and the CARL clinic and hospital. I just don't think that's relevant to our argument. That, that's, I mean, I only see that actually as a benefit to our community, I don't see it as a drain on our community at all, but, but in any case, it isn't an issue, as far as, you know, I don't think it's central to the CARL tax issue. And the other thing I don't understand about this is why we are requesting the University of Illinois to conduct this. If we want there to be a public discussion, why don't we just organize it and host it?
Okay, Mayor Pressing, do you want to have a comment on that?
Yeah, I would like to say why "charity care" is in quotes, because the definition was changed by the legislation that was passed. That's why it's in quotes, because I think most people would not consider some of the things that are now counted as charity care as true charity care. I'm not saying there isn't any charity care, I'm saying the definition was expanded. And I'm only trying to involve the university, because they are the major institution, and we had last week our micro-urban transformational leadership meeting. And so I think the university's trying to take a lead on talking to the community about how we're going to progress. So that's the reason I'm suggesting that they be involved in this, but I agree with you that if they don't want to be involved with it, we could certainly do it on our own, but I'm inviting them to be involved in it, because they're, they're taking this lead on so many things, and trying to shift the cost to the cities. So that's the reason I'm inviting them. But certainly, you know, if you don't want to invite them to do this, or if they refuse to do it, we could do it on our own. But I, I think this is something that affects more people than those that just live in Urbana. So that's the reason I, I proposed it to the university.
Just a minute, Carol, let's have Bill Brown answer. Let's have Bill Brown answer. I'll give a question first.
I'm not opposed to more discussion, and I think it'd be good for more public information. Like Eric, I don't think the medical school has anything to do with it. If Carl makes $100 or $150 million a year, they can both pay for the medical school and pay for their services from the city, and it shouldn't matter to us what they do with it. So I would take out the medical school reference, and I really don't know why we need to say Carl, why we couldn't say hospitals instead of Carl, because this is all caused because of a law that probably hadn't been vetted by the right people, and was passed in kind of a hurry to raise a lot of money with the cigarette tax and other ways to raise money so that we could get matching funds for Medicaid, so that the state could participate in the federal expansion of Medicaid. So it was a big revenue bill. I think it needs a legislative solution in the long term. And if this discussion can help lead to that, that's fine. But I mean, it treats nonprofit hospitals differently than it treats profit hospitals, even though they do exactly the same charity care. Hospitals that make a profit get to deduct it off their, get to deduct their charity care off of the, off of the sale, off the income tax that they pay the state. And then if you happen to be a nonprofit hospital, do the exact same amount of charity care, same community benefit, you deduct your charity care from your property taxes. And that's not right, and that needs to be fixed. And that seems to be the main issue to me, is to make sure that the state is the one benefiting from the expansion of Medicaid. Yeah, the local community benefits as well, but there's really no difference benefit between a profit hospital and a nonprofit hospital. Maybe a nonprofit hospital pays their doctors more, and the profit hospitals make more money because they pay their doctors less. I don't know. But so if the community discussion helps people understand that part better, and if it helps us understand how hospitals can contribute, what they need to contribute to make the community work financially. I mean, they do take up space. They take up valuable space in that case, in the case of Carl and presence, where if they weren't there, there'd be businesses probably that would pay taxes to the school district and to the city. And they use, they use city resources. So we need to find a way for them to pay that, and property taxes seems to be, you know, the most likely way for them to pay for it. Just, I think the law needs to be fixed, and that kind of needs to be our main focus. So, but I'd be supportive of some kind of resolution to encourage discussion, I guess, but I don't think this is quite it.
Diane Marlin.
Yeah, I don't think this is quite it either. Long-term, the legislation has to be changed so that it's fair. Short-term, we need some payments in lieu of taxes for city services. We also need to change the school funding formula so we're not all, so they're not so dependent upon property taxes. That's a big part of this. And I had another point. Oh, the other thing is that I really think it's long past due, time for the city council to be updated on just what is going on. We haven't had a briefing on this litigation for, well, I can't even remember the last time we had the briefing. So I'm not prepared to vote on this resolution until I am updated on the financial impact and the litigation on all fronts, and then I might be more open to this.
Well, we're planning to have Fred Grosser give you an update, because there was a change that the portion, our countersuit has gone to the appellate court. So we will have him give you an update.
Is that just on the township or the presence?
No, no. This is about the Carl.
So it'll be presence and Carl update next week?
Right. Well, I don't think he's working on presence. He's working on Carl.
So do you want...
So what did, Mike, did you want to say something?
He's working on presence.
Okay, so there are different things going on, but we don't have a lawsuit with presence, do we? No, but we can give you an update. I thought I had told people that it went to the appellate court. I thought that had been in the news.
Well, that's not enough. That's a little piece.
Okay, well, we're planning to have him come and talk to you, so you can ask your questions.
So Mayor, do you want to, do you want to hold this resolution until...
Well, I'd like people's written comments. I mean, what would they like to change? And then we can go from there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Carol Amens.
The question that I think I need clarified is, the hospital has always been tax-exempt, but the clinics were not. And so if the mayor can just explain a little bit about what changed this process to make the clinics, is that the state law that changed the process to make the clinics now nonprofit under the hospital?
Okay. That is a very good question. The clinics were paying taxes, and we have two clinics on Windsor Road. We have Carl Clinic and Christie Clinic. Christie Clinic pays taxes and Carl does not because they've been incorporated into the hospital. So that certainly is another inequity that the state law needs to address. So there was a federal law that was going to have the clinics be incorporated into the hospital. I don't know the name of the law, but we met with Carl about that because we had a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Carl. And we sat at the table with Dr. Leonard and people from Carl and people from the city. And Dr. Leonard assured us that when the clinics were to be incorporated into the hospital and therefore no longer paying taxes, that he would make us whole. And so that's where the discussion was, and we're waiting for the, you know, what are the details. And the next thing was that they sued us and claimed that we had directed the Cunningham Township assessor to assess them. So that went into court. It's been in court for eight years. It was filed in Cook County, and the Cook County judge said it should be in Champaign County, and Carl had kept on making delay after delay after delay. And then when this new law was passed by the state, which said that if a hospital pays more in charity care, they don't have to pay their property taxes, and the reason they started paying property taxes was because of a Supreme Court decision that was initiated in Champaign County by our Board of Review and went all the way to the Illinois Supreme Court. So there have been a lot of things going on here, but the City of Urbana did not initiate those things. So when the state law was changed in 2012, it said if you pay property taxes, but your charity care is greater than your property taxes, you don't have to pay your property taxes, which kind of assumes that the charity care and the property taxes are in the same geographic location, which of course, in the case of a city with a regional hospital, is not true. So that, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we at at this point? Eric, do you have a comment?
Well, the only thing I would add is that, in defense of the often maligned legislature, is that the ostensible reason for that provision in that bill, which did indeed come in at the very last minute, was to incentivize hospitals to do more charity care. And it really looked on the surface as though that was going to be a good thing, and as though that was going to, you know, augment our Medicaid system significantly. And this side effect of, you know, the devastating impact of property tax on a, on a small community housing a big regional hospital, housing a big nonprofit hospital simply went unnoticed.
I will say, it wasn't just one hospital. We have two hospitals.
Well, it's true. That's true.
So, I mean, I would appreciate your comments, and so if you want to hold it in committee, that's fine, but please let me know how you would reword it.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Is there a motion to hold in committee?
I move we keep this in committee.
Diane Marlin, Mike Madigan. All right, so we are working on it. We're going to provide written revisions to the mayor for consideration. Any other comments? Yeah, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed? Okay, that is now, that'll come back to us in summary of vice form, and seeing note for the business, we are adjourned.